Thank you, everybody, for being here. Before we start tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for a resident member of our community who's recently passed away. I know many of you know Sharon and Art Courier. Sharon passed away recently. She'd been a valued member of the Newburyport community since 1977. Her business was interior design, and I know she was very involved in a lot of projects here locally, particularly around senior centers and assisted living. She was also on the Anna Jakes Board, as well as the YWCA and the Newburyport Bank, and also involved in the Newburyport Garden Club. So if we could, she passed away recently. If we could hold her and her family in our thoughts and have a moment of silence. Me and the Pledge of Allegiance? Where's that flag?
Where is the flag? It's gone. It literally does not appear to be in the room. What do we do?
We'll go to the state flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God. In the middle of the great and justice for all.
Assistant Clerk Katie Mahan is going to call the roll, so if we could. Call the roll. And you may have noticed there's a lot of people here tonight, and it's actually Ty's birthday party for Mark White. He disguised it as a swearing-in ceremony.
All right, so, whoops. All right, this evening's roll call, Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shand.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Zead.
Here.
Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Counselor Granis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
And now, if the Assistant Clerk could be so kind as to lead our swearing-in ceremony with Chief Bradbury.
Yes, all right, so we'll start with our firefighter.
If you don't mind for one second. This is the second round of the restructuring of the fire department. We were here about a month or so ago, maybe less, so glad to be back so soon. These guys put a lot of hard work in and look forward to their future careers with the fire department. Firefighter Jake Barlow, Lieutenant Matt Hool, Lieutenant Chris Richard, Deputy Chief Michael Camore.
All right. Here, I'll stand over here. All right. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Jake Barlow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
The duties of firefighter.
The duties of firefighter.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now you can sign the book over here, so you'll do the date, signature, address, and title. All right, and I will swear on the two lieutenants together, if that's all right? Okay. I, state your name.
Chris Richard.
Matthew Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of lieutenant firefighter.
The duties of lieutenant firefighter.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In accordance with.
In accordance with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mike Camore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform the duties of.
And perform the duties of.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So while they're signing the book, this is the second stage. We have one more. We'll have captains in the early spring, mid-spring, right around there. So this makes seven new offices positions that have been promoted since September 1st, and we have four more to go. Those are the captains.
And I welcome up the pinning.
I practice this way.
At least you weren't there. Usually it's after you're like, no, actually, if you weren't mine, no.
What, you want me to get rid of this for you? I'm getting rid of mine, so.
While you're at it. Connie.
Wow.
She missed you.
Thank you.
So that would lead us to public comment, so we'll take public comment in person.
Senator Tarver, be welcomed out here up to two minutes on any topic on the agenda. So we'll take this person's public comment.
Yeah, if. Christian, if you wouldn't mind just asking the chief to have them move down the hall.
Go to the way open.
All right, so we'll take in-person public comment, and then we will turn to online public comment. If somebody online wishes to make up to a two-minute statement, and they're from Newburyport on a matter on our agenda, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you after in-person. Only in-person we have is Ron Barrett, 18 Hutchins Road. So Ron, yeah, right up to the line and state your name, address, and two minutes.
Okay, Ron Barrett, Plum Island, president of taxpayers, and worked on the water and sewer from start to finish. And again, I'm here with the bolts that have got no better. And the money that we got from the suing was to fix the bolts. And the maintenance of the system was supposed to be on the whole city. When we connected to the city, all bills were supposed to be all red paper. And I hear they need two pumps or something? Okay, and the other problem is, when they built the little pump house, they didn't make the doors big enough to take the pumps out. So have they figured that out yet? So whatever they say it's going to cost for the pumps, you're also going to have to take the doors apart and put them back together again to get these pumps out, because they made a mistake when they built the building. There's all these things.
Okay.
Does anybody, again, want to look at the bolts?
You can just show them, but yeah, we wouldn't be engaged in deliberation here, but if you wanted to show them, and then we'll.
I mean, this is what's underground on Plum Island. There was 38,000 of them, and they put in with the $5 million they got, they did the fire hydrants, which left money to do the other rest of the 38,000. And the estimate is about $20 million, but changeable. But I talked to the mayor, and I've spoken to you people, that we should have a plan that when they start leaking, this is what the bolts look like 10 years ago on this boat. I'm sure they're worse now. We should have a plan when a pipe breaks, that they put the section in, and that would be done, okay? Because they're going to start just popping apart now. They're going to break all the time, because they're so rotted. So instead of taking the money out of our account to fix it, we should be making a project to fix it as it goes.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. All right, seeing no other public comment, I do not see any hands raised, so we will move into, okay, yeah, you, okay, go ahead, Nancy.
Good evening, Nancy Caswell. Three Jefferson courts, but I'm also your president of your Greater Newburyport Chamber of Commerce. I'm standing here today in front of you to ask you to consider the support for beautification of our holiday decor that the administration placed in today's agenda for $25,000. When I took this position, I was honestly very unaware of the requirements that the Chamber of Commerce had to essentially fund all of the holiday beautification for downtown. That probably explains why it's probably looked the way it has in the past. And as a resident, I was also just unaware of what that looked like. And so since September, I've been working actually with Ron at DPS, but a couple of other members of the community, including the mayor, to focus on how we could make Newburyport look and feel better, and also generate revenue for downtown businesses. With that being said, we hired a contractor that actually does a lot of holiday decor in different municipalities. You've probably seen some of the work already started with the dollars that we've raised so far. We have actually seen a great response from our larger businesses, but as well as our small businesses, so a lot of the retailers downtown. And over the weekend, you may have also read in the paper, the ask for residents, and I'm pleased to announce that we actually did get some funding from residents as well. So it definitely feels like a community effort to make our holidays here in Newburyport sparkle a little bit more, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and ask you to consider voting on this today, so I can move along with the additional decorations to be completed by the Santa Parade on November 30th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That would lead us to late files.
Okay, we have a number of late files coming in this evening. Application 294, Secondhand Motor Vehicle Application State Automotive Repair LLC, going to license and permits. Communication 681, FY26 Classification Tax Rate Proposal, going to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. Communication 682, Memo FY26 Tax Rate Information, going to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. Transfer 246, Mayor Paid Parking $25,000 to Chamber of Commerce Holiday Decorations $25,000, going to Budget and Finance. Order 776, FY26 Residential Tax Factor, going to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. Order 777, FY26 Tax Rate, going to Budget and Finance and Committee of the Whole. And Appointment 567, Steven Crowley, 532 Cabot Street, Beverly, Human Resources Director, until 12/4/2028, going to General Government and Committee of the Whole.
Okay, what is the wish of the council?
Motion to waive the rules and receive the late files.
Motion made, seconded, seconded by Counselor Lane. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so the late file items have been added to the, either to the agenda, and, yeah, so, and that includes the referrals to those committees? Is that correct? Okay. It's been added to those committees as referrals. All right, that would lead us to the mayor's comment.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. The mayor's under the weather today, so I will be providing the update. First, Happy Veterans Day to all our active and active military members. Thank you for your service and sacrifice. Many of you were here. We had a beautiful ceremony last Tuesday here in City Hall Auditorium to honor and remember all the veterans in our community for their service and everything they do to keep our country safe and free. The Newburyport High School Marching Band and the local Girl Scouts made a wonderful contribution to the ceremony. I also would like to thank Veteran Services Director Kevin Hunt, the Fire Department, Police Color Guard, and the DPS facilities head, Mike Bartlett, for organizing another heartfelt event. Election 2025, I want to thank our city clerk, Kathleen Sullivan, and our staff, Katie and Ally, and all their staff who worked during this election season. Thank you to all the residents that participated in our election. I appreciate the candidates, the voters, the poll workers, election volunteers who made the election possible. Our continued commitment to civic engagement and local democracy keeps our community strong. I also have an update on the Senior Affordability Task Force. The task force heard their, had their first listening session this past Thursday at the senior center. These sessions are open to the public. They are tailored towards seniors and older adults living in Newburyport, as well as their caregivers, family members, and friends. Community feedback will help the task force take strides to make recommendations to the mayor and the city council. We look forward to hearing your feedback. The next two sessions will be Wednesday, November 19th, at 2:00 p.m., and Tuesday, December 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. In your agenda today, you will see the tax rate in the supplemental budget. The city council will need to approve a tax rate for the FY26 budget. Setting the tax rate involves considering many factors, and I want to extend my gratitude to our assessor Jill Brennan and our finance director Amy Sorrow for putting in their hard work to prepare the proposal. Each year, we carefully review the data and make thoughtful determinations. For this year, the property tax rate, I am recommending a residential factor of one, a single tax rate across all property classes, and I set, and set the FY2026 tax rate at $9.28 per thousand. This is a decrease from last year's rate and fully funds the FY26 budget as approved by the city council. I appreciate the Budget and Finance Committee's review of the supplemental budget, and my administration will continue to provide support and information on how that supplemental budget could impact the tax rate and our free cash position. The Brown School update. The city is advancing demolition work on the Brown School Gymnasium and associated later additions in advance of the adaptive reuse of the former Brown School into affordable housing. The city's contractor has now completed remediation and off-site disposal of hazardous materials within the building. Careful selective demolition is required to both protect the existing schoolhouse building facade and to avoid impacting it butters closest to the gym wall. The contractor was originally supposed to complete demolition work by November 14th. However, a few additional weeks will be needed. During this time, the playground, asphalt, schoolyard, and all onsite parking areas will be closed to the general public. Following the demolition work and a purchase and sale agreement for the surplus building and property by the Affordable Housing Developers Data, no off-street public parking will be available. The existing gym footprint will be converted to a surface lot for new residents when the project is completed. A full update on the next steps for demolition is on the city's website. The holiday season is just around the corner. The Christmas tree is already up in Market Square, and Newburyport is getting ready to shine and the port of wonder once again. Greater Newburyport Chamber of Commerce is launching a month-long celebration to transform our historic downtown into a glowing winter village. As mentioned during public comment, I am requesting that we allocate $25,000 from the paid parking fund to decorate downtown and support this effort. This investment will help position Newburyport as a true holiday destination and strengthen our small businesses during this most important season. It's a collaborative effort that promotes economic development and brings together our community in a meaningful way. Looking ahead, we also are exploring, exploring the creation of a downtown beautification fund using paid parking revenue. This dedicated account would allow us to tackle ongoing small-scale projects that make a big difference in the look and feel of our downtown. Things like flower baskets, seasonal plantings, brickswork improvements, and holiday decorations. It will also help deepen our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and ensure we have resources to keep our downtown vibrant year-round. Lastly, update on the Human Resource Director. In your packets this evening, you'll see an appointment for a new Human Resource Director, Steven Crowley of Beverly. Steven has over 20 years of experience in the human resource sector across municipal, corporate, military, and nonprofit sectors. I'm confident he will enhance the city's HR services and advance our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Chief of Staff, Counselor Donahue, then Counselor Harmon?
Thank you, President. Yeah, so as for the transfer of the $25,000 from paid parking to the Chamber of Commerce? I'm not really sure where it's, actually, "to" is part of. First, do we know how much we have in that fund?
Yes, we do. I don't have that off the top of my head. I want to say it's roughly $1 million.
Six, six, five.
Yeah, $1 million. It's just going into the packet today, so I believe it will go to committee for further discussion, but.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Harmon, yeah.
The mayor's update is not included on the meeting, so just a note to put it on the website.
Okay, duly noted. Any further comments or questions for the Chief of Staff? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that would get us to the consent agenda.
Okay, on tonight's consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the October 27th, 2025 meeting. No communications. Three applications. Application 291, Secondhand Motor Vehicle Application Plum Auto Works, going to license and permits. Application 292, Cancer Doesn't Care 5K, May 2nd, 2026, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., going to license and permits. Application 293, Bar 25, Planter Request, going to licenses and permits. No transfers. Two appointments. One new appointment, Appointment 565, Matthew Blanchett, Nine Harding Ave., to the Fruit Street Historic District Commission, until 12/15/2028, going to Planning and Development. And a reappointment, Appointment 566, Jean Berger, 33 Middle Street, to the Tree Commission, 12, until 12/15/2028. Two orders that are continued to the 12/8/2025 meeting. Order 772, Gift Acceptance Port Youth and Rec Foundation, $3,433. Order 773, Gift Acceptance Port Youth and Rec Foundation, $750. All items noted below are removed from their respective committees. Budget and Finance, we have Appointment 563. Orders 765, 766, 767, 769, and Transfer 245. Licenses and Permits. Application 288, 289, and 290. And Appointment 564. Public Works and Safety. Appointment 600. Communications 672 and 674. Orders 706 and 758 and 759. And that is the end of the consent agenda.
Okay, what is the wish of the council on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Collectively with the mayor's.
I guess, I don't know, since it's not in there, but yes.
It's actually in the agenda.
Is it?
Number seven's on the agenda.
Okay, great, so, yes.
I think it needs to be, the actual document needs to be added to the calendar invite, so, yeah, correct. All right, so a motion was made to approve the consent agenda and add the receiving file of the mayor's update.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. That would lead us to the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda, we have one communication. Communication 680, City of Newburyport Annual Surveillance Use Report 2025.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety. Second.
Okay, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, this, this is, as it says, is the first report that we're getting on the surveillance technology use that we've had going forward, and it identifies the types of the locations, the types, as well as the associated cost with that. We'd like to go through that in some detail in our next PWS meeting, which will be rescheduled to this Thursday going forward, so it's a short turnaround time on that. So I appreciate us moving it to committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so your meeting is this Thursday?
5:30.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further discussion? Motion made and seconded, referral to Public Works and Safety? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
There are no applications, no transfers, no appointments. Order 770, there's a utility poll. Order 770, there's a utility poll request for Low Street and Story Avenue, along with an emergency preamble.
Motion to approve the emergency, waive the rules and approve the emergency preamble?
Second.
Okay, motion just on the emergency preamble and waiving the rules, Counselor McCauley? Thank you.
Yes, National Grid was here tonight. They did answer all of our questions in their needs in the infrastructure, and so simply this is belt and suspenders to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, that's the purpose for the emergency preamble? Yep, great. So we'll take a roll call vote without any further discussion unless there is some on the emergency preamble and waiving the rules, roll call?
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve Order 770, the actual request and that we had on the poll hearing to install a new pole at the corner of Low Street and Story Ave.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Granis, yeah? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call on that as well.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have Order 771, Gift Acceptance Port Youth and Rec Foundation, $24,672.
Motion to continue to the final meeting of the year?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Zied, seconded by Counselor Lane to continue to our final meeting, which is December 8th, I believe.
Yes.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Order 774, Invitation Night and Holiday Parking, 2025.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to collectively make a motion, a motion collectively, 774, 775, to go to PWS.
Second.
Okay. I was going to make a motion for an emergency preamble on 774. Can we pull that one separate?
Counselor McCauley?
Before the counselor makes the motion, we do have a meeting Thursday, and we should be back in time to have the, we will have a special council meeting that's planned for the budget, and we can insert this as an agenda item if the council president allows us to.
So we are going to have a special meeting on December 3rd, which is before December 5th, obviously, which is what this order is.
My hope is to give the clerks, the parking clerks, a little more of a heads-up.
Okay. All right, so the motion that is on the floor is to refer these collectively to Public Works and Safety. Do we want to?
I will draw my motion on that.
Okay. All right, so that motion's been withdrawn, and Counselor Donahue, did you want to?
Yeah, if I could just make a motion to emergency preamble. 4774, so that we can give a little more heads-up for the parking clerk's office to prepare for the invitation night, that would be the first night of the holiday parking.
All right, is there a second on that, emergency preamble and waiving? Okay, so, so my recollection is that we, and Counselor Donahue, I think this would be you, just state the purpose of the emergency preamble, and that's non-debatable, and then we just vote that up or down.
Yep, no, I just, I did, but I'll say it again.
Yeah, I think maybe a little bit more about what the actual order is.
Right, okay, so this order is to include invitation nights for the holiday parking, which includes the first two Fridays of December. The purpose of the emergency preamble is to allow time for that to get worked out with the parking clerk's office so they can be prepared to cover the kiosks on that first Friday of the month.
Okay, so that's the purpose for the motioning on the emergency preamble. And again, I believe we don't have discussion on that, but we vote on that. All right, so do a roll call on that.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, so emergency preamble does pass, so the underlying motion is order, is there a motion to approve Order 774?
Motion to approve 77, motion to approve 774.
Okay. Second made by Counselor Preston. All right, so now deliberation, and Counselor Donahue, if you want to restate it, or Counselor Lane, you've got your hand up?
I just, when is the Santa Parade?
November 30th.
I'd like to include that in the parking waiver, so free parking for the Santa Parade as well, add it on if we can.
So that would need to be an amendment?
So, yeah, motion to amend to include November 30th.
Second.
Okay, so, speak to, any comment, discussion on the amendment?
Question?
Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, I actually didn't think of it, but thank you. I was kind of thinking more about the shopping, but you're right, the parade night would probably be a good, good faith effort to include, so I have no problem including that if it's amenable to the rest of the council.
Okay, Counselor Granis on the amendment?
Thank you, Counsel President. November 30th falls on a Sunday. I'm not sure if the parking lot is free on Sunday. It is not. Okay, I yield, thank you.
I don't know.
Not yet. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I appreciate what we're trying to do here, but what we've done is we've now created more work for the clerk because now we have a, we have to wrap up the kiosk, then we have to unwrap the kiosk, then we have to wrap up the kiosk again, and what we're traditionally done is waive the parking for the week before Christmas for that last-minute shopping. It is a source of revenue for the city going forward, and I do know that, you know, I can appreciate us trying to, try to stimulate people coming into downtown, but on those three events, we don't seem to have problems with people coming in to downtown going, you know, traditionally. So with that, I will oppose that, but I'm willing to listen to the debate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? So again, we're on the amendment at the moment. Counselor Granis?
Thank you. Counsel President, thank you. I was made aware last year by Clerk Jones that the parking staff is not paid during those days, the days they are not required to be here, so just take that into consideration as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call on the amendment, so in the amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, is to add the date, Sunday, November 30th, to the order for free parking.
So on the amendment, Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, so the amendment has been made and added to the underlying motion, which, and that motion's still on the floor. Any further discussion on that overall motion?
Just a question.
Counselor Shand, and then Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just wondering if Assistant Clerk can speak to the comment that was just made by the Ward III Council about people not getting paid on those days.
I would assume that at least some parking staff would still be on during those times, specifically looking for safety violations, but not in, in the lots.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to it a little bit more, if I may.
Please.
I did give this a lot of thought, because I know traditionally, we just did the week leading up to Christmas, and with all due respect, I understand that does create a little more, a little more work for the parking clerk to cover up the kiosk on those additional days. However, you know, I, I did put this in, first of all, of any transfer for beautification of the downtown for the holidays, which I'm really not sure about my support on that, but this, this is something that I just thought would extend the effort that we historically have done for the holidays to include those invitation nights that we're really trying to bolster people coming out in December to shop locally. You know, I think it's, it really, it really is important that we do whatever we can to support shopping local in the holiday season. This is a make or break time of year for a lot of smaller businesses, especially new small businesses. If they don't have a good holiday season, they won't be here come January. So for some businesses, it really can make the difference, and I think, you know, it's just a nice way of the community to say thank you, and sort of everybody gets to participate in that, that effort by, you know, this, this means, so we all, we all get to say yay on shop local. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Donahue. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I have to admit, I'm struggling a little bit with this. It's the additional dates, both for the Santa Parade and the invitation nights, and the reason that I'm struggling is frankly, it's a bit of a zoo downtown on invitation nights, and certainly the Santa Parade has a lot of people, and so I'm struggling to see where we're not already having a lot of people in town to visit the, the businesses downtown. I frankly have friends who own businesses downtown, and they really struggle with some of these because they feel like they're just really inundated with people, and nobody's really buying anything on those nights, they're just sort of floating through and taking free drinks and such. You know, I have absolutely no issue with the week before Christmas, and the reason I'm really struggling here is the loss of the revenue, right? Especially in light of, you know, the, the look to take money out of paid parking to pay for holiday decorations. I would much rather see us keep these three nights of revenue generation and be able to utilize that revenue to pay for the decorations, as opposed to taking out the revenue from here. So, you know, I'm not even sure which way I'm going to go on this, I just wanted to sort of state, that's my struggle.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President. You know, when I first kind of saw this, it really does sound like a good, good idea. I partake in invitation night, and I have for over 10 years, and one of my favorite times, and definitely, there's a lot of people that come here, I definitely do shopping, and I, but one of the things that I was kind of struggling with as we came up with the idea is invitation night's an evening type of event, and probably goes till nine o'clock, and so there's still the whole day of, you know, use in the lots, and I think this would kind of take out the whole day. What I'm wondering, you know, since we're not sending it to committee, we're trying to maybe move this along, so it could be of a benefit. I do think the value of committee, though, is to maybe even ask the, the parking clerks, you know, kind of their numbers, you know, what does it look like invitation nights? Or have some data to go that, you know, maybe this is an opportunity, or maybe not, in terms of the revenue compared to other times throughout the month. So what I would propose is that we do consider sending this to committee, and maybe the option would be to include maybe the December 12th, like one of the invitation nights closer to the holiday time period that we're going to extend here, as a way to just see how it goes. I really think this is a great idea, I love the spirit of it, but let's kind of maybe see how it goes this first time, and use that data and that information that my colleagues brought up might help us inform maybe in the future how to, how to consider this. So that would be my suggestion, is that we do eventually just move this over to committee. I did support the emergency preamble so we could talk about it like this here.
Okay. All right, so still the motion on the floor is to approve as amended. Any further discussion? Counselor Lane?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say much, but we've spent millions of dollars on our downtown to attract people to come in, and we're squabbling over parking fees for three nights. It just doesn't feel right to me. What are we trying to do? We're going to move Newburyport forward and not, you know, it's, this isn't Field of Dreams. If you build it, they're not just going to show up. I don't know. I looked at decorating the city with this, and I'm like, why wouldn't you spend money on the businesses downtown? They suffer enough in the cold months, and this is right before it, so as much as I see the revenue piece of this, I just don't think it's enough. I mean, if you look at the grand scheme of things, how much, you know, our Adirondack Chairs on the waterfront, 2,500 bucks each? So we've spent crazy money to do what? To make it harder for people to come here? So that's just my two cents. I'm going to support them both. I just think you want people to come in, and I think we should be supporting the chamber in all we can. I've said it forever, until we have, you know, an economic development person that can work closely with the chamber to bring people here, we build a garage, we build, you know, the rail trail, we build the four acres of lawn at, you know, millions of dollars, and we don't do anything to attract people to Newburyport. The chamber, kudos to Nancy, she's doing a great job, and everybody that's been at the chamber has been doing all they can on what money they raise, and we as a city just expect that to come along. So stop spending money on stupid things and spend it on businesses and our people here at home. So that's where I sit. I wanted to stay quiet, but I just can't.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, just a quick question. So when we talk about the 5th, 12th, and 18th, sorry, the 5th and 12th, are we talking about the whole day, are we talking about from 6:00 o'clock on, or whatever, just invitation nights are going forward? And we talk about the 30th, are we talking about all day as well going forward? I know it's easy when the 18th to 25th, we wrap up the kiosk and that's that, and we can, you know, move on, but the other days, I'm not, you know, it doesn't say here, and I'm not sure what the expectation is, and I'm just looking for clarification. Thank you.
I mean, I think it states the whole, the day, it doesn't say whole day, but it says the day, so I assume that's the whole day. I don't know if the, what the intent of the sponsor was, and Counsel Harmon, you also had your hand up. Counselor Donahue?
Sure. Yeah, so my intent definitely was not, was really geared towards invitation night. So not, it didn't mean to take the whole day, which I guess was, we did not suss that out with, when I wrote it up with the city clerk. So that being said, I'm certainly open to an amendment for that. I'm really open to an amendment for any of it, because I'd like something to pass and not have it linger, but more importantly, I, I do think that it would be a good idea to include the invitation nights, at least in the evenings if we can, even if it's just for that last hour, but not having the parking clerk here, it does leave some questions, so I can appreciate that.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. I think it's a nice gesture. I would, I would propose an amendment to keep the 30th all day. I think it's a Sunday, it's a nice thing for people to be able to come to town and not have to worry about paying for parking for the parade, but then I would, I would amend to include, Nancy, 6:00 for invitation nights?
Yes, at 5:30.
So have the invitation night dates of December 5th and 12th only include no parking after 5:30.
Or 3:00 p.m.?
After 3:00 p.m.
Just gives them time.
Give the parking clerks enough time to get out there and do that. So a motion to amend, if I can get a second to three, after 3:00 p.m. on those dates.
Okay, so the amendment is?
I second that.
Okay, I think, I think Counselor Granis had seconded that, so amendment is, you seconded the second, yeah, second, second. So all, all day, November 30th, Sunday, and on December 5th and 12th, after 3:00 p.m. free, free after 3:00 p.m. Is that a yes? That is what you said?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, that's the amendment made and seconded. Discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing done. Roll call on the amendment?
Counsel McCollum?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shand?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Okay, we're back to the underlying motion. Further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Roll call on Order 774, as amended and amended?
Counsel McCollum?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shand?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Okay, passes 11 to 0. Thank you. Parking clerk, good luck implementing. All right, that would lead us to Order 775. Stop sign at Barker and Taylor.
Motion is sent to PWS.
Okay. Second? That was seconded. Counsel Granis, okay. Any discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, all right, that goes to PWS. Thank you. That gets us to ordinances.
So, point of order, just a question.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Just, I just wanna point out for everyone, you know, normally sometimes with late files, we decide to bring them into the regular agenda so we could introduce, some talk about them and send them to committee. I'm just trying to remember, we must have said accept the late files and send them to their respective committees. But I just wanna clarify that. I think maybe in the future, we could be a little bit more, you know, it's a tax rate, a lot of important stuff coming in and we're not really highlighting them. We kind of collectively moved them like a consent agenda. So, I just wanted to point that out. Maybe in the future, we could try to move them to the regular agenda and not just send them to committee. So, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Thank you, Counsel Preston.
Yeah, I just wanna make the point, if that is the case, then that means that the, the transfer for the decorations did not make it as an emergency. Okay, just wanna make sure that we understood that.
So, that was referred to committee, right, in Budget and Finance. Counsel Lane?
Yeah, just, can I bring up, can I ask the, Ms. Caswell, is that gonna impede?
Yeah, that's not possible. We do buy Santa Parade, so the holiday decor will be done by November 1st, which will basically.
So, we're gonna be passed the.
If necessary, it could be applied, I guess, next year.
Counsel Harmon? I don't know what item we're talking about, but I was the motioner on this. I had, I saw that it was assigned to a committee. I had hoped that potentially the chair would, at his discretion, potentially bring it out if that's something that he would like to do tonight, but I didn't see another path to take this out during that motion because it had already been assigned.
So, just. Okay, Counsel Lane?
That's a big mess that we all messed up here. The administration should have sent this over a long time ago and maybe this goes along with what you're working on in the future with transparency and set dates. You know, this, Halloween parking, you know, all of these exceptions that we do and it's kind of like, oops, we had an emergency preamble to waive parking tonight. So, now, you know, we're asking the Chamber to take their money and decorate our city on their dime and maybe they get it back. So, that's a huge mess, if you ask me. And it goes along with what I was saying, what are we trying to do with our city? Are we trying to make this a place for people to come and enjoy or just people that live here? So, with that, I'll yield terrible mess.
All right, so for now, it's been referred to Budget and Finance.
And it's pointless to even go there. Sorry, but it is.
All right, so that leads us to ordinances.
We have Ordinance 211, amend Chapter 13-179, removal of handicap parking space on Otis Place.
Motion to refer to PWS.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counsel Donahue?
Yeah, just a quick introduction. Sponsoring this, this, this particular piece, the person who was initially using the handicap parking spot is no longer living in the home. The son requested, is the homeowner, now has requested that the sign be removed since it is no longer in use by the residents and it is just taking up parking on a very tight street that has very little partner to begin with. So, that's the genesis for that.
Okay, thank you. So, motion made and seconded to refer to Public Works and Safety. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Do we have to do a roll call for an ordinance?
The second reading we do, I think just referring to committee, I don't think we do.
Mr. President, could I call for a five-minute recess?
Let's have a five-minute recess.
Sure. Never mind.
Let's not have a five-minute recess. Okay. So, we are, we need a voice vote on referring Ordinance 211 to Public Works and Safety. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, so that's been referred. That would get us to committee items, Budget and Finance.
Motion to take Transfer 246, Mayor Paid Parking $25,000 to Chamber of Commerce Holiday Decorations out of committee?
Second. Made and seconded. Discussion?
Motion to waive the rules, declare an emergency preamble to approve.
Let's just get it out first.
We need to, we need to vote to get it out. So, all those in favor of removing it from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a 10 to 1.
Motion to waive the rules, declare emergency preamble to vote on this tonight.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded by, made by Counsel Harmon, seconded by Counsel Preston.
As has been discussed, there's a timing factor for this funding being allocated to the Chamber so that we can let them move forward with holiday decorations. I think we're, we've done a lot of work tonight to make our town more attractive from a parking standpoint. I think welcome debate on this so that we don't let the time elapse before it's needed.
All right, so that's the purpose for the emergency preamble, waiving of the rules. So, we'll have no further discussion on that, so we'll do a roll call on that.
Counsel McCollum?
No.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shand?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
No.
Counsel Zied?
No.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no. Motion passes.
Okay. So, the underlying motion, somebody wanna make a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion made by Counsel Harmon, seconded by Counsel Granis. All right, so, let's find what we're talking about. Discussion, Counsel Harmon?
Thank you.
And then Counsel Donahue?
Just to reiterate some of the conversations I've had with the Chamber President, this has been a whole of community effort and I believe, you know, more than this amount has been raised from businesses and others. And I believe the new president has been doing great work in a short amount of time to get Newburyport in a position since she took over that group. Learning a lot and understanding the cost of everything is more expensive these days. I think this is a reasonable good faith effort and something that I hope that we would see the administration work to budget and plan for more thoroughly in the future now that we know about these things so that they aren't coming in late. I do think the world in 2025 could use a little sparkle and I think Newburyport has an opportunity to, to level up its game around the holidays. And I think that is, you know, something that can bring happiness to not just members of our community, but all the visitors that come here. So, I'd be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, President. If I may, through the President, to whom it may concern, what are we getting for our Like specifically? Is there anyone that can answer that?
No, no. Yeah, you should stand and, so if the Chamber President, Nancy Caswell, could answer that, that would be good.
By hiring the decorators, a good amount of work was actually alleviated from DPS' office. So, the holiday lighting and the ornaments are actually on the tree or being handled by the decorators themselves. The Santa Shed, which was also parks before, is also being handled by us. That's being put in Tracy Place and those trees will be decorated as well. The garlands amongst In Street, State Street, as well as Pleasant Street. And we're looking to, with these funds, attract and, and bring in the parking garage. So, a big push would be to decorate the roofline of the parking garage with a wreath to attract more people to actually park in the parking garage and connect the parking garage to a more walkable community as you can, or walkable downtown. As you can see, the decor kind of ends where you start to see the first tree, assuming that some of you may have already driven through town and seen the first couple of tree trunks. And so, it would connect that in that capacity. We've also met with Jeff Matheson and that would decorate the two trees here in front of City Hall as well and continue the garland around the lamp posts down Pleasant past the post office. It also covers some additional expenditures around just the general Santa Parade elements and I think for the most part, that's, that's it. I would say that through the raise of the community, as I mentioned, through the families that we received, we are somewhere probably, if it was to be negotiated, the price that would make you feel better. I think a contribution from the city at 10,000 to 15,000 would do the trick and would alleviate the strain on the Chamber and the members of the Chamber of Commerce to have to float the entire bill of decorating the city on a whole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Very interesting to hear. Never heard any of this before, but I, I like it. But so, for the $25,000, is that just essentially to hire a vendor to do all of this work? Do we end up with wells and lights at the end?
We do end up with the ornaments on the tree and the lights on the tree, yes.
And those will be property of the Chamber, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And you'll house, the, the city will not need to house those for you? Those will be housed some?
I'm pretty sure DPS would like me to take care of those, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you so much and thank you very much for kind of describing the kind of vision. I just had a question. I'm not sure if you're the one to answer it, but how do we previously, I think in your intro, you talked a little bit about it, that the Chamber previous to this always was responsible for our downtown kind of, and, and donations?
Sure, yes. So, it was actually brought to my attention when I came on in July and we were planning the car show, which the Chamber also runs, actually by Ron, and said, when are you picking the Christmas tree? And so, that's when I realized that this is in fact the responsibility of the President of the Chamber. And with the support of Ron, we started navigating and looking at trees all around the community for the perfect one. And that's when I started to look at the numbers. And in all fairness, the Chamber has raised probably somewhere around $7,000 to $8,000 annually, which is what has looked the way it has downtown because it's been put on the, the businesses to raise their funds. So, in the past, we've asked for 2 to 250 for, you probably remember what might look like, present tags on the lamp posts because every small business would do a lamp post. And then what really triggered it was when David Hall so lovely decorated the tannery and that's what made In Street and State Street look really dark. But yes, it has been the responsibility of holiday decor from the small businesses for the community. And when I started meeting with the mayor, you know, back in September to talk about this, the reality was it seemed to make sense that it would come from parking because it is in fact a draw because of downtown businesses for people to park and get to it. So, we started to talk about the expansion into the parking garage, which I believe personally would draw more people to park in the parking garage and walk past the businesses on Merrimack Landing that are, you know, across from the Fatterhouse, for example.
Great, thank you. And if I still have the floor, then I think my other questions would be for my colleagues. So, please be to have a seat. In terms of our downtown paid parking, I remember when we did form that and I can't remember if we put parameters, and I don't know if Amy, our director, finance director is online, but very curious, or maybe my colleagues or the Chair of Budget and Finance, what was, was there any parameters built around how that money could be spent? And, and then my second question would be in terms of its use, and I know we've used it for various things. It was always somewhat related, though, to some of our downtown, I wanna say never like this. So, that's why I wanna make sure as we're talking about it, we're kind of thoughtful on what does this mean going ahead? Is that gonna be maybe the expectation and to kind of think about how that's, that we'll be using that money, which is, you know, fine, but I think it's really good. This is what I would have asked when, if it went to committee, is really the understanding of that fund and how it's to be used. I don't know if, I do see Director Saro is here, but I don't know if they have that context by any chance.
Yeah. Amy, I don't know if you or Christian know the answer to that or if, it's not quite coming to me if another counselor knows. And Amy, were you able to hear the question?
Yeah.
Christian, you wanna?
I'll see if Amy has more details. I will just say, I know as part of when we get our expense reports each quarter and the invoice reports, downtown improvement is one of the line items and we've had it zero for a few quarters now. So, my understanding is that we historically have used it for downtown improvements. I'll defer to Amy on if there's any statutory like limitations.
Amy, I'm gonna allow you to talk or I thought I, maybe you got promoted to panelist. Yeah, Amy, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I don't have ordinance in front of me, but as the Chief of Staff has said, historically, this has been a use of the paid parking fund. And I know it came up at a previous council meeting with the year-end transfers and that is something that a larger conversation we've been having in the administration to bring forward to council is, you know, how we're going to use this paid parking moving forward, especially with regards to downtown and when we can start expanding that to the rest of the city.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Zied?
It was, it was funded, it was created by order, not ordinance, so it says the fund upon a recommendation of the mayor, approved of the council, may be used for acquisition, installation, maintenance and operation of parking meters and other parking payment and enforcement technology, the regulation of parking, salaries of parking management personnel, improvements in the public realm and transportation improvements anywhere in the city of Newburyport. That's the list in the establishment of the fund.
Thank you.
Counsel Khan?
One more question, sorry, thank you. So, improvement to the public realm, I would suspect, could probably apply here. The, the, the last kind of point, and I, I believe it was stated by the, the Director of the Chamber, Director, President? President, sorry, is that the amount that's being raised, which is wonderful and thank you, thank you, that's really appreciated. But when you said maybe a reduction to 15,000, I mean, I, I think what I, you know, obviously wanna thank you, I think decorating the parking garage, the wreath, all that, you know, I see it in other cities and communities. So, it's not like I'm, I'm against doing this, but I, I do think maybe if we could start with a little smaller amount, I would be open to maybe amending this to 15,000. And then we think a little bit more, because this conversation, you know, being on Budget and Finance, working with this paid parking fund for other things, this has never come up. So, while this is a very new endeavor, I don't see it as a, a negative one. So, I, I also wanna be just really mindful how we, I think I said that on the other topic too, just how are we gonna be positioning this moving forward? So, I would support this and I'm not sure if I'm, this transfer's coming from the administration, so I don't know if I have a right to amend it or?
I, I was listed as the sponsor, but yeah, you, you can, you can make an amendment.
Yes, I would make a motion to amend to 15,000.
Okay. Motion made and seconded by Counsel Harmon. Counsel Granis?
Thank you, Counsel President. If the sponsor of the amendment would up the, the monetary value for another 2,000, you said there was about eight raised, so if we could make it 17,000 to make it even[1701.83] said there was about eight raised, so if we could make it 17,000 to make it even 25, I think that would help the Chamber immensely. Thank you.
Do you want to modify your amendment?
Before, can I, can I just ask what?
Counselor Lane?
Just as a point of reference, what have we spent this money on, or has it just been accumulating, and have we spent any money out of it whatsoever? I thought there was a fund of 1.6, what is it?
Parking fund.
Okay.
General fund.
So what have we spent money on, if, out of the money that we have raised, or that isn't the parking fund?
There's 1.6 million dollars in paid parking.
Yeah, so what have we spent recently, or just, just as a point of information, things that we've spent money on for, that have come out of that fund?
Perhaps Director Sorrow could mention, I, I think they have links to the fund, they could say this.
Amy, I'm, I'm going to make you a panelist, which is easier on my end.
It looks like the Chief of Staff is rapidly searching for it as well.
All right, so, so the question is, what, what other items have been used, have we used paid parking for?
So I know we did a year-end transfer for downtown improvements to help clean up during the summer months. That was again, I believe, just moving it for additional labor, but usually it has not always been touched. When we have our quarterly parking reports, we usually get around $200,000 in net profit, so we always pay our, you know, our expenses first, so as the order mentioned, and then that goes to the parking, paid parking balance. So historically, recently, it's mostly been for downtown improvement.
Okay. Lots of hands up. And Amy, did you have anything to add to that before we, we'll go to?
The Chief of Staff's answer was complete.
All right. Counselor McCauley, Counselor Donahue, and Counselor Zede?
Add to that answer though?
Okay, Counselor Zede, sure.
Every year as part of the budget, one of the transfers that's sort of baked into the budget is a transfer from the paid parking fund in order to fund the parking clerk's operations. This appears in your budget for FY '26 is about half a million dollars or so, and that is all the operations of the parking, the heat electricity for the garage, the maintenance of the meters, the kiosks, you know, salaries for parking staff, and so on and so forth. And then at times, there have been other trickle-down withdrawals from this account for other things. That may be more what the Chief of Staff and the Finance Director are referring to, but it's a, it's sort of a revolving fund, to explain it very simply, it's just transient money comes in as meters get paid, and then money goes out on an annual basis into the budget, which then gets distributed and spent to actually fund the operation. So when you say, "What do we spend it on?", we spend it to fund and run the parking system, and then secondarily, you have all these other functions, and obviously, we've been collecting more than we have needed to run the program, and that's why it's been able to accumulate a 1.6 million dollar balance over a period of many years.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zede, Counselor McCauley, then Counselor Donahue.
Yeah, I just want to dovetail on that, is that, just to add to that, is we just paid for the lights, the streetlights that we're putting in with this as well. So that would be an improvement. I disagree with the assertion that decorations are an improvement to our infrastructure downtown. I think they're just that, they're decorations in that defo. My, my real concern with this is that this has been a plan that has been talked about either from July or from September, depending on where the story starts, and we don't have a plan. All we have is a request for a dollar amount. And so it doesn't matter what the dollar amount is, we typically don't write checks and not have a plan or not have, we can't pass the red face test with taxpayers, that we're now going to say, "Oh, by the way, we're going to, we're going to pay for decorations." And where does that stop? Do we pay for 4th of July decorations for another group? Do we pay for a boat parade? You know, there is a latest MMA, best practice that just came out about how to avoid getting dragged into holiday festivals and crossing civil rights boundaries along the way. Just because we want to try to pass this, it'd be nice tonight, we're opening up as many windows for problems down the road, which would have been better to talk through in a committee meeting, to be able to get some of the details of this going forward. And so that's, that's my agenda on this whole kind of concept that we're talking about right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the amendment is to go to $15,000, we should try to confine our comments to that, but Counselor Donahue?
Okay, I'll do my best.
Yeah.
So the 15,000 does seem fair, 17,000 does seem fair. Is that really all I'm allowed to say? I mean, everyone else just got their?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. But what, you know, is giving me a little bit of heartburn, I get to say that this time, is that, yeah, this, this conversation's been happening away from us for several months, and we're only hearing about it now. That's the only part that is unnerving, is it doesn't feel like there's any kind of transparency in, in this situation. It just really feels like a backdoor deal that was decided to move forward with, and under the premise that in the future, we'll have something planned out, and we'll have some sort of specific program in place for, for this type of thing, but right now, we're just going to dip into the paid parking. I, I would not normally have issue with that if it was to go to committee and have the time, but given that we were given it at the 11th hour, it's, it's tricky. 25,000, 15,000, I mean, it's, it's still an ask that just, I understand the spirit of it, but I feel like if, if, why didn't it come to us a few weeks ago, is, is my, my biggest problem, but I, I will likely support it, I just need to know that this is not how it would move forward in the future. Paid parking isn't just to, yeah, for decorations. Luckily, we'll get to keep them, you know, the Chamber gets to keep them, that's significant to me. We do get something for it to reuse, that's important, I think that's important to consider. So I'll just yield for that for now.
Thank you. Counselor Wright?
So in regard to the amendment, I won't, I won't be supporting the change to the dollar figure. My larger concern is with the, with the, I'll, I'll hold my remarks until we discuss the, the actual underlying.
Okay, all right, thank you. So the amendment is 15,000, Counselor Granis suggested 17,000 is, you want to change her?
Yeah, I accepted the friendly.
Okay, and accepted by your second?
It's just no longer how we do business. We need unanimous consent to, to do so. So that's a.
So is, is there unanimous consent to change it to 17, excuse me, to 17, yes?
Or we could withdraw the motion and start at 17?
Yes, I could do that, that might be better. I, I will withdraw my amendment and?
And the second is withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay.
And amend it to 17,000.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, I, I actually struggle with going up. The, the President of the Chamber said somewhere between 10 and 15. Now we've gone from 15 to 17, I understand the logic of they've raised eight. Frankly, I think we should be really sensible about we're using taxpayer dollars to do this. We should not be giving the Chamber a penny more than they actually need. I would feel much better about making this 10, frankly, than moving it to 17, because this is, this is not our money, it's not Monopoly money, this is taxpayers' money, this is residents' money, and if they don't need more than 10, I would argue we should not be moving toward 17. So I, I will not support 17.
Okay. The motion is 17 right now. Counselor Lane?
Here it comes again. I just asked the administration, how much do we give the Chamber annually for anything?
So we currently do not have any transfers to the Chamber. The most similar to some sort of downtown improvement would be during the Parkland programs, but obviously, there are user fees that then help us pay for the flowering plants and the hanging baskets along State Street. So there's no direct transfer at the moment, that's the closest thing. But I think that's part of the larger policy question here, is this is trying, I know it's one night, but trying to kickstart a conversation on how do we use funds, whether from the city, to help our downtown businesses?
So I equate this to starting a business and not marketing it at all, just so you know. Like, I understand where everybody's having problems with, you know, there's no, there's no plan, which is awful, there's no list of, you know, itemized things, there's no, you know, it's an arbitrary number, which I get, which is not okay. I mean, that in the future, come to us in, you know, August, or right after the budget's passed, and make it a line item, you know, for holiday decorations, whatever it is that the Chamber, I feel like the Chamber should get more from the city for what they do and what they do for us. And while, you know, I understand that it's taxpayer money, but this is, this is parking revenue, right? This is money that is not necessarily taxpayer money, this is money that people come here and pay to park. This is why we collect money to park. So why would we not reinvest our money that we have raised in revenue into our business, which is the city and having people come here, as a general rule? I mean, it only makes sense to me, I mean, personally, I, you know, at first, yeah, I saw it, I'm like, that's a lot for lights and ribbons and whatever, and where does that number come from?
Point of order, could we confine your remarks?
On the amendment?
To the motion, so that we can dispose of the motion?
Well, it is, I mean, and so, you know. Okay, I won't support it, I want the original 25 to go to the Chamber, and they can use it for whatever they want, and to market the hell out of the report and to bring people here. That's where I'm at, so.
All right, so motion on the floor is to amend the amount to 17,000. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, roll call on the amendment to change the amount to 17,000?
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
So it has been amended to 17,000, so underlying emotion, underlying motion, Counselor Zede?
Thank you. I just have a few remarks. First of all, I think the timing falls squarely on the administration for not submitting it in a more timely fashion. That's my first comment. I make that as a statement of fact, in my opinion, that should have come in sooner, could have come in sooner, didn't come in sooner. It's a familiar story, unfortunately. Second comment is, in 10 years on budget, I've never seen a sloppy a transfer as this. I, I don't understand, first of all, we're mixing things, we're mixing procurement with funding, so we're actually single-source sourcing to a certain vendor, and yes, there are rules under 30B, and you can do procurement, and you can have it under a certain amount, and you can just pick what you want to do, but very rarely do we see, if ever, that I can recall a transfer, we just literally say we're going to transfer money to an outside agency. I don't understand how that passes any accounting controls. That's why counselors are struggling, saying, "There's no contract, there's nothing that says, 'Here's a list of things you're going to get.'" I mean, use your own intuition and your own experience as a counselor to think about the million transfers that we get over the course of each year and each, each session, and compare that to this. Again, that responsibility falls on the administration, not on the, the poor party that has been put before us to try and defend this, even though this isn't really their realm to talk about municipal finance. The third thing is, I don't even understand what we're arguing about, you know, 25, 10, apparently going to a round number is somehow relevant, it's not clear, that's not how we, we don't say, "Well, we're going to build a waterfront park, let's just round it up to $6 million." We need to have actual things that we can hang on to. So as always, the Council's put in a terrible situation to try and make concessions, to figure things out, because residents will both ask us, "Why don't you have any control over the money?", and "Why can't you decorate downtown?", and we have no good answer for either, because this is how we do business. So in my opinion, I supported the 17, because it's closer to coming down, which is the direction this should be going in. Frankly, it shouldn't even pass as, as it has been proposed, due to deficiencies in the proposal, but in the interest of, you know, trying to compromise, I'm, I'm with Counsel Preston, the correct number's 10. Other than that, I won't support it in the end. I yield.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Wright?
We're, we're establishing a very slippery slope, very difficult precedent to establish. If this was a priority for the administration, then the administration should have come to the Council with a plan, with a budget, and, and the administration should be the ones that we're giving the money to. It should be a transfer to a, to a city entity, if it's a city priority. Or, in all fairness to the Chamber, you've been placed in an awful, in an awful situation, coming, having to come here before us to ask for money that is a priority of the administration, but it's an emergency that the administration has caused by, by coming, by bringing it to us late. It's, it's physically irresponsible, it's, it's, it creates all kinds of liability for the city. We have a third party now that's going to be climbing up ladders, putting stuff up on stuff, and who's, who's liable? If someone falls and breaks a leg, or God forbid. So this is an awful situation that we've been placed in. I'm all for the city spending the taxpayers' money and administering this as a city initiative, if that's a priority for the administration. I would support that. In years past, and I've been in downtown Newburyport for, in my role in, in financing for over 25 years, and the Chamber has always paid for those things, they've always raised funds for those things, it's been part of their membership appeal. It's, it's one of the reasons why they can go to their constituents and say, "We need to raise money, because we need to do these things to improve downtown Newburyport." So I can't support this, not a penny. It's just, you know, and, and it's just irresponsible. It's, it's an emergency that's been created by the administration. If it was a priority of theirs, we should have had this transfer in here as soon as they came up with a plan. So I can't support it, not, not a penny.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
You know, thank you, Counsel President. I, I can't disagree with my colleagues, but I also recognize that, I, I think we learned a lot here in terms of as well, like, the, the concept of what is in the spirit of what's trying to be done, and maybe what's the best way to approach it. So in hearing my colleagues, who I, I can, like I said, I cannot disagree, I think everything they pointed out was valid. I did hear the pathway to a compromise on something that we are, I think we want to see something, but we're not, we do believe the, the transparency and knowing what's going to happen next year, for example, because that is in my mind, how, what are we setting as a precedent? So I did hear an appetite for 10,000, I don't mind making an amendment again to 10,000 and, and leave it at that. And this is again, the spirit of compromise, and then really, next year, I believe, yeah, I think what we're saying is being heard, and let's take it from there, and see what could we do to make it a better process. But right now, I am making a motion to amend to 10,000.
Seconded by? Right?
I'm sorry, Counsel Donahue?
It's a new motion, motion to amend.
Yeah. We will, we will back to the underlying emotion, underlying motion, I keep thinking of it.
So we have to, sorry, we had a motion to approve.
Yeah, but with the, I think, well, during a discussion of a motion, of a motion, can there be a motion to amend? I think there can.
Yes, yes.
All right, so you made a motion, Counsel Khan made a motion to amend, Counsel Harmon, I believe, seconded it, so now we're at 10,000. And Counsel McCauley did have his hand up.
Okay, thanks. So, so the paid parking fund has clear limitations and restrictions as to what it can be used for, this, this is not one of them, decorations are not. I understand the counselor's point that was made, that this is an investment from an incubator standpoint and a business going forward, but we've done that. We've done that with in-kind donations with, through DPS for the last six years, at least. So when they talk about things like, "Oh, the Santa House is now going to be under, back under the Chamber and moved around and things like that," that's something DPS did, and that's something that the city had invested in. So the city has been investing in downtown, has been investing in the festive atmosphere of downtown, has been supportive of the businesses of the Chamber along the way. We've done it in a different mechanism than we, because money has been tight, both in the Chamber as well as in the city, we've been able to do it with, through labor, and, and now all of a sudden, we're going to outsource this. To the point that was also made by my fellow counselors, is that we're now hiring, someone is hiring a firm that's going to be climbing all over city buildings. And when we do even minor things like repainting lamp posts or resetting cobblestones through one of our volunteer organizations, we require that they conform to city procurement, and same things with insurance needs and all of that. We have no guarantee that any of that is happening here as well. Again, it's just another window that we've opened from a liability standpoint. We don't know the vendor, we don't know that the vendor has insurance, we don't know that the vendor is paid according to city procurement rules, things like that. We don't know any of that stuff. Why? Because we're here at 8:30 at the last minute going forward. 10,000's better than 25,000, which is better than, you know, the things that we keep hearing. So I'm just venting. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Zede.
Counselor Lane, then Counselor Khan?
So one thing that I'm thinking of here is, you know, we're voting on, you know, spending this money and writing a check, we don't, do we have to write a check, or could we get the invoices to get paid when the work is completed, so allocate the money out of a certain fund? So now we're not overspending, we're not giving, you know, a blank, I mean, I'm going back to, this is like Real Estate 101, when you have an, you know, you have an inspection, and there's issues, so you want to meet in the middle. So why you tell people, "Don't just send me an arbitrary number, send me itemized things that we can talk about, and if there's a problem, then yes, we'll, you know, okay, so there's this piece that's going to cost $750, this, this piece that's going to cost 3,000. So send us the bill, and we can allocate this." So send us the bill, and we can allocate this out of this fund. I mean, if we can do that, I don't know procedurally, if we can just say, okay, so whatever the spend is, up to a certain number, and cap that number, they're going to send the invoices, we'll pay it out of this fund. I know it's a slippery slope, where, you know, you could have every single group that wants money coming out of it, but I'm tired of that crap, to be honest with you. Like, let them come, let them show up and say, hey, give me, you know, whatever amount of dollar for something, you know, stupid, hateful, whatever they want to do, and, oh, we're going to sue you. Go ahead, I'm done with it. Like, cool, this is giving back to the city. We've done a crappy job of spending money in my six years here, quite frankly. We've spent a lot of things of, you know, that are more trivial than, as Counselor Harmon said, making the city nice, for once, and really decorating and welcoming people here. That's, I gave you credit. So, but it's, that's what I, that's where I'm coming from, is can we allocate and say, okay, we're going to cap this at 17 or 10, or whatever it is, and they send us the bills and we pay for it? Or am I crossing a legal line here, spending-
Yeah, I think-
Somebody can-
Chief of Staff might want to speak to that.
Thank you, counselors. And again, I appreciate your patience on this. One suggestion, if I may, is, in the past, what we've used is the downtown beautification. So right now, in your transfer order, your CIT says as a gift to another vendor. One way that I think might help is if we put it into that account, whatever funds accounts it decides, into that account, and that allows us to make sure that we have a contract with said vendor. That's how we've done it in other circumstances. I think that might help us work with the chamber, where we can help make sure that the expenses are properly accounted for. That's just a suggestion I would maybe recommend, and I would just see if maybe there'd be a friendly amendment to just change where that money is going to.
Just to follow up too, I know we're-
Counselor Lane?
In terms of procurement rules, this is going to, you know, this is going to be brutal. Like, if that's the way it's going to go, it's got to go off a bid.
Yep.
If we're essentially hiring, I mean, I don't know how it works, and maybe somebody can educate me, going through a third party like the chamber and then circumventing procurement.
So fortunately, I think, and I defer to the Finance Director, but usually it's under $10,000 you need a procurement, and you need quotes and bids. So if there are different purchases needed, if they're under $10,000, depending on what service. So for example, if you're buying lights, that's one purchase, and I believe that would be under $10,000. If you're procuring, for example, garland, that could be another expense. Again, you would be able to make sure that if it's under that $10,000, it's accounted for. But I do see, through the chair, our Finance Director-
Yeah, Amy Sauer has her hand up, and I know Counselor Khan and Counselor Zied. Amy, do you want to unmute yourself? There you go. Anything to add to the current line of inquiry?
So full disclosure, I am procurement certified, so I actually am fully qualified to speak on this. So for $10,000 or less for any purchase, we would just go with best practices. So we would solicit bids from responsible vendors, and we would be able to make that determination on, and the same as you would procure any simple goods. If it is over $10,000, we would obviously follow the respective invitation for bid process and go through that. We would have all of the necessary insurance requirements and all of the necessary contracts in place.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khan, Counselor Zied?
Well, just quickly, my point, two things. One is, it was brought up in terms of people being on our buildings, and I would assume, and I don't know if DPS yet, when we do have people working on our buildings, if there is a process that goes and works with the city to ensure that they are, you know, vetted to do that, I'm assuming that's in place with DPS. And then there was a suggestion of moving it to another account, and nothing was suggested. Is there an account in mind, whether it's within DPS? Or did I mishear that? Oh, the downtown beautification line?
Line item.
Line item.
It's a line item in the budget.
Yeah, so we could just move it there, so we would just make an amendment to that line item, which I don't have the number, but if-
Do you want to make that an addition to the amendment?
Yes. Yeah, so, yes, I'd like to make a motion to change the line item to that downtown beautification line item, and-
So it's $10,000 and downtown beautification?
Yeah.
Instead of transfer to outside agency?
I'll defer to the chair.
I'd just like to call the question on that amendment.
Okay.
Which is interruptible and non-debatable, so I'm calling the question, on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so the amendment is, the amendment is to $10,000, and changing the, a transfer to, instead of outside agency, it's that downtown improvements, beautification.
I'm calling the question.
And the second was?
Yeah, Counselor Harmon, then Counselor Zied made a motion to call the question.
Do we need a second on that? Do we have a second? Okay.
Second, yeah. Was that you or no?
Lane. Seconded by Counselor Lane. All right, so that's the, that's the vote. Roll call?
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Nine yes.
So that's the amendment, now-
Now that's calling the question.
Is that the whole thing? That's the whole thing? Okay.
Your voice vote is fine.
Counselor Wright?
Just a point of order. The transfer was presented by the administration, and it's up to them to change the funding source.
Did we change the funding source?
No. The destination.
The destination.
We have the assent of the administration. Oh, that was suggested by the Chief of Staff.
Yes, I think that's the cleanest. That's helpful.
Yeah. Okay.
On the amendment.
So we're all set with that?
Are we doing a roll call?
Just on the amendment, voice vote is fine.
Okay. Voice vote on the amendment?
On the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, who were the noes?
McCauley, and Wright.
Calling the question on the underlying motion with the amendment now passed?
Second.
Okay. That voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Now we vote?
Voice vote's okay here, too.
So this is a vote due?
Approved as amended.
As amended.
$10,000 into the downtown beautification fund.
Okay.
And that will be a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Nancy, you're welcome to stay. Thank, thank, thank you.
Motion to approve-
I'll send you a notice form.
Thank you.
And you have the account number.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve out-of-budget appointment collectively. Appointment 563 Victoria Finnegan, 10 Boxford Road, to Assistant Treasurer Collector, 12128.
Second.
Just collectively. Order 765, grant acceptance 911 incentive grant, $61,192. Order 766, grant acceptance Municipal Road Safety, 28, 24586. Order 767, grant acceptance Police Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Fund, $30,000. And Order 769, CPC FY26 Supplemental Atkinson Common Lily Pond Coping.
Second.
Collective to approve, okay. Made and seconded, discussion?
The committee met on October 30 regarding these matters. Appointment 563 was Victoria Finnegan, very little conversation in committee. Victoria did join us, as did the treasurer. She has been with the department for seven years and looks forward to continuing. Committee suggested your approval, three to zero. The two grant acceptances for the Police Department, Order 765 and 766. The first one, 765, is a 911 incentive grant. It essentially helps offset some of the costs of the full-time dispatchers. It also, you know, will help continue their education and their training to maintain certifications and what have you. The amount, this is a state grant, it's basically based on population and 911 volume. It's basically a perennial or annual grant, so it comes every year. Order 766 is a little different, that's the Police Muni Road Safety Program. The city has been the beneficiary of this grant in the past, but not in recent memory. It's a federal, it's federal money, and then it comes down through the state, and then from the state to the cities. Sergeant Greg Whitney from the Police Department attended with us. He estimated it was roughly 10 years ago, the last time that the city did indeed receive these funds, but they're happy to have applied and have received this time around. The general suggestions for this are usually around enforcement, and particularly like campaigns, if you will, so impaired driving, click it or ticket, you know, those famous signs you see on 95 that always have a catchy phrase on them. Roughly out of the $28,000, it would be $12,000 for traffic safety. That's the programs I mentioned, as well as $11,006 for community awareness and education, which is really largely officers attending, actually, education for things like a ride, which is the impaired operator training, and then LIDAR certifications. LIDAR is a combination of laser and radar for taking speeds for vehicles. And then $3,700 for some equipment, specifically a LIDAR. I guess we have a LIDAR, but it's quite old. And then things like a breath test and a handheld radar as well. They asked for $36,000, they got the $28,000. They see that they'll be able to use it for enforcement, and they did provide some additional information about crash data, we got a little bit into that. Committee recommended that, three to zero, and also recommended the 911, three to zero as well. Okay, that takes us on to Order 767. This is the grant acceptance for the Memorial Justice Fund. In this case, they requested $40,000, they received $30,000. This is for a very specific purpose, is what's intended for the expenditure, and that is to buy a new UTV, all-terrain vehicle, can't remember, universal terrain vehicle, I think is the U. $30,000 is the full amount, no additional funds are anticipated to be added to this, so they have a very old ATV from the early 2000s, sometimes making appearances at events and parades, as well as out on Plum Island, and their intent is to take this $30,000 and replace it. The lifespan of this is expected to be about 10 years, as is common for this type of vehicle. The current one's 20 years, they're, you know, very low usage, relatively speaking. It's not like a front-line vehicle that's driven constantly. And then they mentioned again, you know, potentially patrolling the beach, when people are missing, that sort of thing, and some of the consistent themes we heard with the drone application recently as well. So that was approved, three to zero. Maintenance is what you might expect, oil changes and what have you, not expected to be anything crazy. And I believe the final one on this raft here is Order 769. This is the Lily Pond Coping for Atkinson Common. So we have already approved some funding for the coping. Coping is the border that goes around the pond, as we had seen during the CPC process, you know, sort of falling apart and in need of some rehabilitation. As they got into the project, they have basically determined that there may be a better technical solution for how the coping is connected to the ground, and, you know, they certainly could make do with the funds that have already been approved and go with the original plan, but there's a sense that if we are able to, if this is approved, then it would allow them to do the sort of better option, and that would have better longevity. That's sort of the broad baseline argument for it. This is an out-of-band CPC request, CPA request, but it did go through CPC. They did indeed vote for this. The ask here is about $15,000. Other projects that were funded did come in a little bit under budget at the amount of $76,000, so the net, so net-net, you're getting some money back, you're being asked to spend a little bit here to a net of $60,000. And so the committee did see fit to recommend this for approval, three to zero, I think primarily on the argument that it would last longer and would be a better finished product for a longer period of time. So that's this set here.
Great. Any discussion on the appointment in those four, I believe it is, orders? Hearing that, we'll do a roll call, because the appointment at least needs a roll call.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston? Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve transfer 245 DPS sewer Plum Island Utility Trust Fund, $100,000 to sewer maintenance, same amount. So just to get to this, from a physical standpoint, the need is that there are four primary valves that are housed in the Olga Way Station, which is in Newbury, but serves the island. And the purpose of these valves is it's what allows them to turn on or off a portion of the vacuum system that exists out on the island, and the valves are about 20 years old, and essentially are or are past their end of life. They can turn the valves now, yes, but they don't fully shut off the system. And the primary need for shutting off the system is storms, you know, bad weather, making an effort to find a leak when there is one on the island, and obviously, it's just good hygiene and practice to be able to control the system. And so that is the purpose of these funds. Again, there are four valves, two big and two little, and the $100,000 would go to be replacing all of them. I would say that was the least controversial part of this. No one had any issues. The presentation, as far as the need for the valves, is competent, and I think the committee recognized that in our conversation. The primary debate, as you heard, a little leading edge in public comment, and perhaps here on the floor, coming after, is the source of funds, is the Plum Island Utility Trust Fund. These are the funds that were taken in by the city by way of the settlement that was reached by the state. Some councils were here, worked on that, or didn't work on it, depending on how you look at it, but the money was taken in, and the request is for 100% of that to come, 100% of this request to come from that fund. Primary issues or concerns with that is, A, the distribution of expenses for typical and routine maintenance for island-related matters, B, the full ratepayer base, as opposed to just continuing to go to this fund as a source. And again, this is not endemic to the quality of the system or the installation of the system and the faults therein. This is just, valves have a life, and eventually they, that life comes to an end, and that happens across the city, and when it happens in other places, all the ratepayers split the cost. And the concern here is that seems like when things happen on the island, rather than splitting that cost citywide, that this seems to be a fund that is very often used. So we did talk about it in committee. One request we had made that we did not receive a response on was, as we've done in the past, could we split this, could half come from this fund and half come from something like retained earnings in the sewer fund? No response received on that. So ultimately, the committee did just send it out with no recommendation. So I will yield to my colleagues first, I'm sure, and then others to speak out.
Counselor Wright?
Thank you to my, the council member from Budget and Finance. It's, this is, it's a question of fairness. If valves fail at the Story Avenue Lift Station, after 20 years of use, the ratepayers pay for them. If valves fail on Plum Island, or anything else happens on Plum Island, they take money out of this fund. It's not fair, it's not equitable. And what's going to happen when the rest of those bolts that are in the ground rusting today, when they fail, and they will? And we had withered away this fund on these continual requests for funding. This money is there as a result of the improper installation of the water and sewer project. We know that. We spent $2 million to replace all the hybrids, the bolts in the hybrids, to fix the hybrids. Now, we know that we're going to be spending money to fix other parts of the system that were improperly installed. That's why we won the lawsuit, that's why we have the money. This should be, the cost of routine maintenance for equipment that has been there for 20 years should be, in all fairness, should be spread across all of the ratepayers, including the ratepayers in Newbury, on the Newbury side of Plum Island. the ratepayers in Newbury, on the Newbury side of Plum Island. They should be paying for this, too. So I, once again, will appeal to the administration to take this out of whatever source you would fund if you had the same exact situation happen on Story Avenue. If you had valves fail on Story Avenue and you didn't have money budgeted in your budget, you take the money out of retained earnings. I'm imploring you to do the same thing, in all fairness, to everything that happens on Plum Island.
Thank you. If the administration want to comment to that. Amy, Christian's going to say something, but you may want to add anything.
Thank you, Chair. Just to respond, after the council, sorry, the committee meeting, I did talk to our Water and Sewer Division. And just on the update on like hardware failure and the bolts, when we do routine maintenance, those are done. And that comes out of the normal sewer budget. So that is just across any city, not unique to Plum Island. That, so meaning, it is fair, right? If something happens on Plum Island, we're using funds that will be used in Story Ave., for example. I think for this, we, I have understanding that we do have $2 million for this utility on Plum Island. These vac systems are unique to Plum Island's system. And so that seems to be the most, you know, reasonable course of action for this type of repair. That's where we fail. And then just, the only other thing I wanted to mention is the ongoing maintenance, like the idea of when the bolts, other material will fail, we will still have this fund. And we are already doing ongoing maintenance as part of the recurring budget. Again, that's part of the sewer. That's not part of this fund. So you'll still have that fund and sewer retained earnings for when there are those major repairs. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Wright, again?
Yeah, you know, with all due respect, 20-year-old pieces of equipment will fail. They fail all over the city. We're fixing water breaks every five minutes in the city. Those costs are absorbed by the budget, and when they're not, they're absorbed out of retained earnings. That's all I'm asking, to be treated the same as anybody else in any other part of the city. The fact that the water and sewer system on Plum Island is special, a special vacuum system, is irrelevant. It's a fairness issue. Costs should be borne by the ratepayers.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I support the notion of spending this money. I would ask the administration to double down and think about a different source of funds on this. What we're seeing here is, you know, as it's been explained, is that we do have an outstanding liability. And it, having had the privilege of sitting on the water ad hoc, what we find is that we do nickel and dime ourselves and we do rob from Peter to pay for Paul a little bit. And then when the big projects come along, we say, how did that happen? Right? And we don't have the funds for it, or we never really thought it would, today would actually happen. And that's coming, right? Well, we're, you know, we periodically get to see the bolts, right? But we periodically are reminded, when we see the bolts, that that doomsday is coming for us. And that anything that we can preserve in a reserve account to be able to lessen the blow to that would be very helpful going forward. So that's part of what I think is the plea here, is that when we talk about maintenance of our, of our, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, we talk about it in general. When, when things happen in the West End, there's not a special West End fund that they tap into. It's borne by everyone. Something happens down in the traffic circle or Rails End, again, it's not, there's not a specific fund that goes on there. And I would suggest that the project is worthwhile. The maintenance of these valves definitely has to happen, but it should be part of the ongoing maintenance and that a different source of funds should be sought by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. So I stand convinced with the counselor from Plum Island, I'll call you. You know, this account was established with lawsuit settlement around a particular issue that has nothing to do with the valves in this pump station. And I agree that, you know, maintenance of this particular pump station really should be shared across all the ratepayers across the city and that the money in the account should really stay in reserve to fix the issue that, you know, that the lawsuit was really seeking to fix. And, you know, I frankly would go a step further and suggest that the administration should really consider that when there is maintenance being done on the hydrants on Plum Island, that that work really should come out of this fund, because that is what that fund exists for. And so we should be taking the money for that maintenance from that fund, but we should not be taking the money from that fund to pay for essentially routine maintenance for the system. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Harmon, and then we'll hear from the Chief of Staff again.
Thank you. I think I might have to ask something from the Chief of Staff, but I'll start with the Chair, Budget. The timing-wise, this came out without a recommendation. I know we have tax rate setting and limited meetings left, so I'm just wondering if there was any context discussed around urgency of getting this done versus potentially doing a second pass with a different funding source than I can defer to the Chair or Chief of Staff.
Counselor Zied.
Yes, we always talk about timing or make an effort to. In this case, I think that's the reason why it came out with no recommendation, was to provide the opportunity for the council to deliberate and discuss. They, they obviously would like to replace the pump, the valves, pardon me. As far as changing the funding source, there's only one entity that can do that, and that is the administration. And we did make a request for that. And as you heard tonight, they, they don't agree, which is their right and their prerogative, and it is for the council to deliberate. We don't want this, I don't want this back in committee. We've done our work, presented to you. We now have, I don't know what the right word is. We have a decision to make. We have a proposal. May be willing to implore the administration to change again, as has been done, but if they don't, this is what we have.
Okay. Chief of Staff and then Counselor Wright. He had his hand up earlier. Did you want to say something?
Thank you. Just to some of the council's points, I understand the frustration on how if there's bolts being done, like we will just use our normal sewer maintenance, for example, water maintenance. I think that's one of the frustrations, maybe moving forward, there'd be a way to do that. But it's also, does require a vote of the council, so it's difficult where, again, when these things break, we got to go do it. And then we have to figure out how to pay for it. So I think that's where it's frustrating, just mechanically of how to use that. So I think historically, they have just used their sewer maintenance fund in order to make these repairs. And I think that's why I'm trying to say, it is somewhat making it whole. In the past of where we have used sewer ratepayer funds to replace some of these fixes when something happens. And this is a larger fix that will maintain the quality of the utility system out there in the sewer. So that's why we feel more confident of making this request and knowing that there's still a good amount of funds for maybe long-term planning on how we actually in the future use funds from this utility fund.
Counselor Wright, and then Counselor Khan.
So my understanding is that this work has already been done, that it was done on an emergency basis. So really haggling around how to pay for it. So it's not holding up the work. I think that's important for everyone to understand.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So a couple of clarifications, and I appreciate the dialogue, and I think this comes up a lot, and I do appreciate the counselors. Kind of going back to the source and the reason for the Plum Island Utility Trust Fund, which was the lawsuit that was around $5.5 million, and it was related to the vacuum pump system that was faulty and that we had sued, if I'm kind of summarizing quickly. So this was the system kind of in question at the time that the lawsuit was done. Every time it comes up, though, I always ask, what's our criteria for spend? And I think it's probably an ongoing theme here, but the real gist of it is there will always be these matters coming before us. It's a fairly large amount of money there, and we keep revisiting the same conversation. And all I would ask is that we have some understanding of when does this make sense to be used or tapped into? To me, the 100,000, especially since it is related to the valves on the vacuum pump system, is that according to the memo here? So I was more maybe seeing an opportunity just to kind of split hairs here, is to try to take 50/50. I think it's something that the Chair of Budget and Finance may have mentioned, but in the past, we tried to kind of relieve the burden on some of these funds in recognition that there's going to be a time where we're really going to tap into them, given that catastrophic or something that could happen. So I'm wondering if there is an appetite for the administration to possibly consider a split or instead of just a hard no on the 100,000, and also be open to hearing what my colleagues think of that.
Okay. Counselor Shand.
I'm going to give the Chief of Staff time to continue texting right now, because I know he's asking these questions, because I agree with my fellow at-large counselor. We have looked at these in the past and we have split the differences, and this would not be any difference than it is, has been in the past. So I would ask him to text even faster than he is right now, as I continue to talk, to see if we can get some sort of idea of whether we can split this some way. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Zied, and then Counselor Wright.
I just wanted to add two things. One is the quantum of vote is a supermajority to remove money, so just bear that in mind. The second thing is, I want to answer the question about the standard. To me, it's really fairly straightforward. If it's a cost arising from the quality of materials being installed, the manner or method of installation, mainly failure or poor craftsmanship, quality, installation and so forth, or a known defect of the system as a result of how it was specced or designed, then those are all things that would make really good sense to take out of the Plum Island Utility Fund. If they are typical customary, ordinary replacements, ordinary doesn't mean they happen every day. Ordinary just means, and at-large counselor said it one way, I'll say it another, which is you install something, it has a certain life. When that life comes to an end, that's an ordinary and expected expense. That is not something that makes sense for you to take from the utility fund. I will telegraph that I will accept the compromise, because sometimes it's the best you can do. But that's the standard, and if you go back through the history, you look at the actual lawsuit that emerged, you'll find that really the lawsuit was brought on the things I mentioned. The materials that were used that were below specification or didn't meet spec, poor design and engineering that was done that didn't meet muster and basically was found basically by settlement to be insufficient. And then poor, you know, oversight of actual installation. Sometimes they had the spec right and had the material right, and they just didn't install it correctly. So those are kind of the things I would point to. And if you need a final analog for your, for your benefit, it's like having a warranty on your car. If something fails due to manufacturing and that sort of thing, it's covered by warranty. They don't cover oil changes and things that, you know, tires that are known to wear out and that just have a certain life to them. That's an ordinary expense with owning a vehicle. It's the same thing here.
Counselor Khan, then Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Council President. Just to follow up on that, I was curious, like I said, I mentioned 5.5 million, I think, was the actual amount, or maybe a little less. What is that kind of the general gist or philosophy that has been used to spend that money down? Just out of curiosity, I'm not, I don't know if you remember, or if Director Sorrow has a list from that account on what the last few, or I think my at-large.
Counselor Wright.
So the initial money that came out of the fund was placed into a hydrant fund. That took care of the repair specifically of the hydrants. That was about half the fund. There was a balance left over in the hydrant fund, and that's where they'd been coming until they've now exhausted the hydrant fund. So because the hydrant, the remains of the hydrant fund have been exhausted now, because you've been picking the pocket of the hydrant fund all this time instead of passing the burden on to the ratepayers, that fund is now at zero. So now we're back to the main utility fund. And as much as I want to honor the spirit of cooperation, I have to insist that this is it. This is where it ends. We have a clear definition of when you should be taking money out of this fund and when you shouldn't. I'd like that institutional knowledge to survive me on the council, because I won't be here in the next session. But I urge my colleagues to say no to this, not because I don't want the work done, the work's already been done. I want you to say no. Join me in saying no, so that we can stop this madness, once and for all.
Counselor Khan.
And one last follow-up. In terms of other sources for funding this, if it's from not this fund, I'm trying to think of the maintenance fund, is that under the sewer department that's covered with the enterprise? Or are we talking about free cash? So I just wanted to get clarity, and how much money is in that fund would be helpful to know.
Chief of Staff.
I also, thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Chair. I think Director Sorrow has her hand up as well, but part of the issue is that they have used most of the sewer maintenance line, so that's why for such a large expense, we're going for other sources. As far as other possible sources, it would be sewer retained earnings.
Director, Finance Director Sorrow, if you did have your hand up, I apologize for missing it. Did you have anything to add?
In discussions offline, so thank you for the time for that. The administration is in agreement to amending this to the 50/50 split between the Plum Island and the sewer retained earnings. We are certified at 1.2 million in sewer retained earnings and splitting that 50/50. And we do look forward to getting this clarified going forward.
And as Counsel, this is a point of information, as Counsel Zied said, this does require anything out of the Plum Island Utility Fund, whether it's 100% or 50%, any percent does require a two-thirds vote of the City Council and Water and Sewer Commission.
Motion to amend to accept the, what was just stated, just so we can get that onto the books here.
Second.
So it's 50,000 retained earnings sewer and 50,000 from the Plum Island Utility Fund as and with a updated transfer form to follow.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Khan. Counselor Khan, did you have your hand up?
I was going to say the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay. Hearing none. Do a voice vote on the amendment, I suppose? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Nine to two. And the underlying motion, discuss further discussion? All right. Hearing none. We'll do a roll call on that.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
No.
Counselor Shand.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
No.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
No.
Counselor Granis.
No.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Okay. That fails.
Five, yes. Six, no. Fail. Motion fails.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So motion to remove Communication 673 firefighter's letter of agreement from committee.
Second.
Thank you. For now, just to confine my comments, the committee did not have a chance to meet on this, but given where we are in the year and the end of the session coming up, I'm asking if we can take it out of committee and have a brief conversation, probably headed for receiving file with it.
Okay. And again, say the communication number.
673 firefighter's letter of agreement. I think a clerical error may have occurred. It's just, it's not in the packet, but I know it's still in my committee, so your indulgence is appreciated if you indulge. And if not, we can send it back to committee.
Which one is it again?
Communication 673 firefighter's letter of agreement. This was a communication that was submitted in the 1027 packet. You may recall, we requested some documentation from the fire department. We can just get it out of committee and, like I said, if not amenable, we'll send it back.
It's actually in Public Works and Safety.
Oh, did you take it to Public Works?
It was assigned to me.
Okay. I had it on my list, so that is my mistake. I apologize. Okay.
We're taking out, the motion was to take it out of committee.
No, I withdraw the motion. I think we went back and forth. Anyways, all right. So we'll leave that Public Works. Just a brief update on budget. I know I've been emailing you, but for the benefit of the public, we will be meeting on Thursday. We will be starting a little bit later than usual. We're starting at 7:00 PM, and we will be taking up all things related to taxes. So remember, that is the, first is the supplemental budget. We did talk about that in a prior committee meeting, but today, we have been sent a revised supplemental by the administration, so that is in your email, and I will have that posted to the meeting for everybody to inspect by tomorrow morning. to the meeting for everybody to inspect by tomorrow morning. So that's the supplemental. The second thing we have is the tax rate factor. This is the split between residential and commercial and industrial, and then the actual rate itself, which is, which follows from those two. Probably the most notable thing about Thursday is that this will be our public hearing. We are required to hold a tax classification hearing, and it has been duly noticed and posted. I guess that we learned the rules have changed a little bit. It no longer needs to be put in the newspaper, so it was not. But it has been posted with more than a 48-hour notice, and so we are clear to have the hearing on Thursday. But I just want to say that hearing or not, we'll be accepting public comment also on December 1st, provided we need that meeting. And then, of course, on December 3rd, you've heard about the special meeting now a few times. I'm confident we'll take public comment there as well, so we'll have plenty of opportunities for public comment, and so anybody who is interested may do so. We really mostly took in these tax rate matters here, so the committee's on track to clear its docket before the final meeting and close out this session. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Do you, Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just a question for the Chair. You mentioned a new supplemental budget. One of the questions that was asked in your committee meeting was that there'd be a breakdown by category as opposed to the line item, right? Where we have request, is that, is that part of that as well? And if not, could you ask that it be part of your discussion?
Yes. You know, I received this today too, so I have not fully studied it. There are, there is some more detail to it, but I think we'll work on it. So I certainly understand, yes, it was asked for, and I'm sure it can be done.
Okay. Community Services?
Yep, thank you. We do not have anything on our docket with community services, but we do still have minutes that we have to approve from the meeting from quite a while ago, actually. So I'm going to pull together a meeting, hybrid only, just to approve our minutes, and we'll see if something comes in with our next packet. But if I could, well, if the Council President will entertain me, give an update on the water ad hoc.
I will entertain you, yes.
Thank you very much. So since we last met, we have actually met three times. We are now meeting weekly in a all-out push to try to get the work done before the, to get the report done for, in time for the last council meeting on December 8th. So just a quick recap of the three meetings that we did have. On October 29th, we had a second discussion on the water treatment facility, a secondary conversation because we couldn't finish in the previous meeting, as well as a discussion around the reservoirs and the algae blooms within the, algae blooms, or within the reservoirs. So basically, with the water treatment facility, ultimately, the conversation boils down to the fact of, does it make sense to make a $24 million upgrade to the existing facility, which is really at the end of its existing life? Because that upgrade would not, you couldn't sort of attach a new facility to that upgrade, so we'd be spending $24 million for an upgrade. And then at some point in the not-too-terribly-distant future, we would need to do, build a new water treatment facility. So would it be more prudent to just build a new facility with these upgrades included in it? And those upgrades specifically are to be able to remove PFAS from the drinking water, and there is a federal requirement that we can do that by 2031. A new facility would be on the order of $60 million. That is a very rough estimate because we have not even come close to designing it or really thinking through that. But so again, do we spend $24 million for an upgrade, or do we just spend $60 million and get a new facility that includes the upgrades that we would need? On the reservoir side, the city has treated the reservoirs this year six times, which is a record. We've never treated the reservoirs more than three times in any single season for algae blooms. So the algae blooms continue to get worse. There's a concern that the algae, the cyanobacteria are actually resistant to the treatments that we have, and the vendor very strongly recommends that the city in the spring do what's called an alum treatment, which is a treatment which actually takes up the phosphorus that's in the water. More importantly, it's in the sediment in the reservoirs, and that's really what feeds the cyanobacteria. Notably, that alum treatment would cost on the order of $650,000. Again, it would need to be done in the spring, and it is not currently budgeted for. The city also needs to consider the dredging of the upper and lower artichoke reservoirs, and that unfortunately could not be done until after the Indian Hill pipeline were to be completed because we, our only way of pulling raw water to the water treatment facility is through the lower artichoke, and we can't dredge the water and pull the water at the same, well, dredge the reservoirs. You'd essentially need to drain the reservoirs to be able to dredge them. So, you know, there's some challenges there. So there are lots of issues around those things. On November 5th, we finished the conversation that we had around the Indian Hill pipeline. There, if you remember correctly, there's essentially two phases to the Indian Hill pipeline as a whole. It would be a water line all the way from Indian Hill down to the upper artichoke, and then a water line from the upper artichoke to the Storya Pump Station so that we could bypass the lower artichoke. We previously had the conversations about that upper reservoir to Storya Pump Station conversation. This conversation really centered around the water line from Indian Hill down to the upper artichoke. And the really, the biggest issue around this portion of the project beyond the costing and the funding of it, this is about $18 million for this particular project, is the placement of the pump station up at the Indian Hill reservoir. The issues are whether or not to put it on the east side or the west side. The importance of the east side is it would be co-located with the dam that exists there. The challenge is that the work to be done there would cause a lot of vibration, and there's a lot of concern that it would actually damage the dam at the Indian Hill reservoir as well. The surrounding property is owned, is not owned by Newbury Port or West Newbury, and it would require getting approvals from the landowner. It's Greenbelt owns it, and so to be able to put it there, we're not really assured that we could put it there. The alternative would be to put it on the west side of the reservoir. The concerns on the west side of the reservoir are essentially sightlines, so they're, West Newbury actually owns that piece of property, and they particularly bought that property so that nothing would ever be built there because they don't want interruptions of their sightlines on that side of the reservoir. So there's, it's uneasy on the east or the west. These are decisions that need to be made in the future. At this meeting, we also had a discussion about the collaboration and impacts with West Newbury. Angus Jennings, who's the town manager from West Newbury, joined us to talk about the issues that really could be compounded with West Newbury, because there really are a great deal of interdependencies with West Newbury. The upper and lower, well, the Indian Hill reservoir, well-owned by the city of Newbury Port, sits entirely within West Newbury, and the upper and lower artichokes, both actually, the property, or the boundary between West Newbury and Newbury Port runs right down the middle of both reservoirs. So West Newbury owns half of each of the reservoirs, including where the dam is in the lower artichoke reservoir. So we really need West Newbury's, we need a partnership with West Newbury, and we need us, we need to work with them, and they need to work with us to be able to accomplish anything related to the reservoirs, the dams, and the pipeline. And there, you know, something that I think is easy to ignore but could really cause a lot of issues is the fact that because they have a less centralized form of government, they are a town, it is going to take a great deal of planning and coordination because some of these things not only would have to go through their Board of Health, their Board of Water and Sewer, our Board of Water, yeah, Board of Water, and their Conservation Commissions, some of it would actually have to go to town meeting. And so we really need to do a lot of education, coordination with West Newbury. Notably, the intermunicipal agreement with West Newbury was signed in 1980, so it is many, many years old. State law does not allow for any intermunicipal agreement to be older than 25 years, and we are beyond 25 years, so we are completely out of compliance with state law. West Newbury has gone through the process of getting their ducts in a row around a new IMA. They are very interested in a new IMA, and they sent over their, and so they engaged a lawyer specifically around water uses. They met with their water board, their Board of Health, and their Board of Selectmen, came to an agreement of what they would be looking for in an IMA. They sent that over to Newbury Port in March of 2023, and we have not responded to that. So Newbury Port really has to start the process of understanding what we're looking for in an IMA and start the negotiation process with West Newbury. One last thing I want to point out there is they are, you know, frankly, there are some hard feelings within West Newbury about, you know, the water use and the fact that, you know, they, we are taking from their reservoir in the first place. But there is particularly some hard feelings about the fact that they are being charged the same rate as we are. So they pay the same commercial rate that any household in Newbury Port does, but notably, they have a single meter point and a single connection point. And so, well, you know, they are paying essentially for every taxpayer's meter connections and all the issues that go around all this varying pipes around Newbury Port, they have a single pipe going into West Newbury. So it's just worth mentioning that they don't love that in particular. All right, on November 12th, our third meeting, we discussed the Amesbury Interconnect, as well as the financial aspects of all of the work that we're looking to do. On the Amesbury Interconnect, there is a strong recommendation from Master of Law to have it interconnect in the event of an emergency. Unfortunately, Salisbury, Newbury, and West Newbury are all unable to provide water to Newbury Port. We actually provide water to Newbury and West Newbury, and Salisbury is already taking their water, they are taking extra water from Amesbury because they're not able to provide all of their needs in Salisbury. So Amesbury is really the only place, the only neighboring community where we could have an interconnect. There have been discussions with Amesbury around this. Unfortunately, Amesbury has said that they are only able to send, in the event of an emergency, they would only be able to send about half a million gallons per day to Newbury Port. Newbury Port average usage is 1.7 millions, 1.7 million gallons per day in the winter and up to 2.6 million gallons per day in the summer. So at best, Amesbury could provide a third of our water needs in the event of an emergency. It's also noteworthy that if our, if we were to have an emergency and that emergency was related to either algae blooms or a drought, Amesbury would likely be finding themselves in exactly the same situation and therefore wouldn't, they could be in a situation where they would not be able to send any water to Newbury Port. However, in the event of a backwater event that is, you know, an emergency, if we were to have an emergency in the event of a backwater event from the Merrimack, Amesbury would not experience that because their water source does not, is not anywhere near the Merrimack River, so it would be an event where we, an emergency where we would be able to pull water. Notably, we also need to establish an intermunicipal agreement with Amesbury before any of this could happen. On the financial impacts, frankly, we've had a number of discussions about this within the ad hoc, and, you know, it's, it's very hard to determine the financial impacts or even model the financial impacts at this time because, A, the priorities have not been established. That is, you know, what the ad hoc is really trying to do. Timelines have not been established, most notably around permitting, and firm costs of some of these projects. Again, as I stated earlier, you know, even a new water treatment facility at $60 million is a very rough back-of-the-envelope number because nobody's even looked at designing such a thing for us. So, you know, ultimately, it would be a real draw on staff time to try to have them model, you know, the sort of infinite number of scenarios that we could pull forward. And so, you know, we really came to the conclusion that it's probably not something that we should try to tackle within the ad hoc, and perhaps we should consider an ad hoc in the new council that could really take on that particular piece of the puzzle. You know, but what we have to sort of discussed is that there really is a need to progress the designing of these projects so that we can get firmer timelines, both around permitting builds and those costs, so that we could drive to these financial impacts. However, the Water Enterprise Fund currently does not have enough money to cover just the design of the major projects that we're considering. So that's the work that we've done over the last three weeks. We have two more meetings coming up, very notably, this Wednesday afternoon from 1:30 to 3 o'clock right here in council chambers is where we've gotten through all the technical conversations, and we are going to start deliberating around a prioritization of the projects. We did have a smaller working group where we pulled together a, the list of the risks, the list of the projects, and a scoring system that I did send around to the members of the ad hoc today in hopes that they can take a look at that and we can use that as the basis of our conversation on this coming Wednesday. So if anybody wants to, you know, members of the public or anybody on the council wants to come and really hear these deliberations, we are going to start that process on this coming Wednesday. And then the following Tuesday, which is a change from our normal Wednesday schedule because the Wednesday is Thanksgiving Eve, and we didn't think anybody would show up. So on November 25th, we're going to have a meeting in the evening in hopes of the public being able to participate with us. That would be 5:30 to 7:00 here in council chambers, just before the License and Permits Committee meeting, where we hope to finish deliberation on the prioritization and deliberation on the report to finalize it. If we can't get through all that, we may have to have yet another meeting to be able to finalize a report in time to deliver it to December 8th. So it's been a great deal of work. It has been extremely valuable and informative, but it has been quite a beast to get our arms around, but I feel like we're making some real progress there.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. Yeah, we can't deliberate, so.
Well, I don't want to deliberate.
Just more of a question. Sure, go ahead.
And I'll ask it to, you know, whoever. Bossy Gillis, maybe, one of these guys. How are you all going to pay for it? That's all I want to say. Good luck having to pay for it. Maybe we could have a picnic on the waterfront on four acres of lawn sponsored by Poland Springs and have everybody parked in the garage. But on that, I just wanted to ask that question, put it out there. How are you going to pay for it?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Preston, for that very comprehensive summary. General Government will meet on December 1st, Monday, and the item is a council of the whole, and that would be the HR Director. And that would lead us to licenses and permits.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 288, 289, and 290.
Second.
So these are, the first is the youth hockey tag day 2025. The applicant came before us. It's the same as that they usually do. They're asking permission to use city property sidewalks to have tag day to raise funds for the hockey program. 289 is a movable sign request. This is for Tide and Time at Horton's Yard, 58 Merrimack Street, and they'd like to place a sign on the side, you know, on the edge of the sidewalk directing traffic to their location, which is, if you're familiar with Horton's Yard, they're all, everything's set back beyond the parking lot, so they want to draw attention to that. Then, application 290, it's a request to have the menorah accompany the holiday things downtown. The rabbi was unable to attend, but because of the holiday season. So we took it out of committee and voted to approve all three of these, three to zero. The menorah request is something that's been ongoing for many years, so we didn't think it was necessary to have someone appear for those.
Okay. So again, collectively, it's those three applications. Great, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a voice vote on them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then this is an appointment of Jennifer Batuck to the licensing board. Motion to approve. So this runs through 12, 1, 2028. Jennifer appeared in person and spoke to the committee about her interest. She's, she's very interested in being a part of the committee. The licensing board has had some quorum issues, so we're pleased that there's an interest in someone filling that out on the board. And so this is also recommended for approval, three to zero.
Right, thank you. Any further discussion on appointment 564? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shand.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
I'd like to move things around a little bit in deference to the DPS, who has had great patience here. Motion to approve Order 759, the snow and ice plant.
Second.
This was presented to us. It's kind of a copy of last year's with some slight edits that I'll just point out. There's always the general introduction of what they're trying to do. The snow emergency parking ban, when they talk about it, there's the infamous flashing blue lights. We're now up to 15 locations. New ones were added this year, but just a notification that they were growing over the last couple of years, and now we're at, we hope, is that a good number going forward. Some of the quirks here that we may be experiencing are in the alternate parking areas that we have. Of course, we talk about things like going to the Green Street Lot as well as Cushing Park and C&amp;J Lot, and not the garage because that is still a pay-for type of scenario. In each one of those locations, the ask is that within 12 hours after the snow emergency has been undeclared, then we need to go back to regular hours of operation of all of these lots going forward. The quirk here is a little bit is that we heard from, although we didn't address, but we believe that if we have a snowy-type season, we're going to hear more of this, is in the area of the Brown School demolition, folks in the neighborhood were parking at the Brown School, getting their cars off the lot, with that being closed and fenced off to public access and parking. We anticipate more concern that people have that their designated spot is now downtown and they have to walk an additional few blocks to get their car off the street. That wasn't addressed as part of this, but we did raise it as an issue for DPS to start to consider if they want to do a shared street down the road or something like that. And for, depending on the weather and snow volumes, this may or may not become an issue in the upcoming council session. Again, as just wrapping this up, they talked about how they go about their process from pre-treatment, snow plowing, and post-storm cleanup. We did spend quite a bit of time on the post-storm cleanup aspect of things. You know, we don't have snow angels anymore, although the program exists. We don't have kids that are volunteers that are part of that going forward. That's still a gap and a problem. We can't ask DPS to be taking care of all the sidewalks in the neighborhoods. But on the other hand, we do need some, some people need some help. Some people are going to pay for the help, but some who are looking for affordable type of volunteers, there's a gap there. The DPS team had laid out how they go about addressing the post-storm cleanup. It's very consistent with everything we've seen in the past. One note, all the vehicles have GPS tracking on them, and so this is their plan going forward. We had approval, three to zero, of acceptance of the plan.
Counselor Wright?
Through the chair. There's been some constituent questions raised about Cushing Park, specifically the unauthorized or non-permitted vehicles that have been parked there. And I'm sure those need to get cleaned up prior to the winter season starting. So has there been any discussion in regard to that?
Actually, there was. It was part of our discussion as well in the end, where yes, they'll be cleaned up. National Grid should be wrapping up as well as they were alerted by DPS that they can only have so many vehicles in the park itself.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? The motion was to approve Order 759. Hearing no further discussion, we do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
The motion to approve Appointment 660?
Second.
This is Thomas Tomborello, Assistant Wiring Inspector. Thomas came before us today, before us this past meeting and talked about his experience. He's been an Assistant Electrical Inspector in West Newbury in Groveland. He's been reached out to in this particular aspect, in this scenario, to provide backup to our own electrical inspector when there's time off. So we may see him periodically, not all the time. He's been in this trade for over 30 years, comes with high recommendations going forward. We recommended him three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Kahn?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file, Communication 672.
Second.
This is a member from Community Action, President Carrie Perry. She had come before us and spoke at public comment. We gave her an additional few minutes to speak. She did come before us remotely to speak again about what's going on. She has a PSA for everyone tomorrow at the senior center. There will be a heating discussion on how to get heating assistance. She had pivoted from, when she came before, she was talking about SNAP benefits and the food aspect, but in this particular aspect, she was talking about the heating assistance program that was going on. She strongly had recommended to us to try to get the word out that if you're having some troubles or think you're having troubles, that you need to apply and you need to apply through this program, and they will help you as best they can. They do extensive work with the Executive Office of Housing. They follow their formats. They're an agent for them. They have a physical location in Newbury Port. It's at the Head Start Program, which is down on the end of Plummer Street. So they're very, they want to be visible, they want to be more visible along the way. They did talk about some of the, they don't have Fed funds, but they expect to have some federal funds coming in. And we were very grateful to have her give us these reminders of all the things that they do.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Motion is to receive and file. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Counselor McCauley?
Thanks. We, motion to approve, excuse me, motion to receive and file, Communication 674.
Second.
This motion is the, I want to say, the Mass CEC Center of Clean Energy On-Street Charging Solutions Program. It's actually just a feasibility study. We have a, we had the vendor that sponsors this, LITO, was present as well as Molly Ettenborough, our Sustainability Director. They talked about all the good things that were going on here. They were looking for suitable locations. They were trying to overcome technical challenge regulations. They were trying to, they plan to engage the community. They've been working on it for about a month. They will continue to work on it through February when they will make recommendations. What they're trying to do is they're trying to get pole-mounted chargers or pedestal chargers out into communities. So, you know, it's one thing if you have a garage, it's one thing if you have a community-based location, let's say, in a community parking garage or a parking lot or something like that. But there are many areas, even within the city, that only have telephone poles out people's houses. We see people being creative by having extension cords run out their windows, across sidewalks and things like that, which is terribly dangerous for everyone involved. So this is trying to push this technology out into the neighborhoods. We will not get, this is not a charger, per se, but this will be a study of where chargers should go. And they've identified six particular areas, but after some discussion, I think they're adding back in a couple of more for their discussion, which I think is good. And so we gave them considerable feedback about how to approach the neighbors and neighborhoods, being mostly ward counselors in the meeting. Again, we recommended receive and file and an education of ourselves on this particular matter, three to zero.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motion to receive and file. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve, Order 706. This is the Surveillance Technology Policy. This is a follow-up to the policy we approved a year ago now. Through some fits and starts, we finally got the city to create a policy for itself. We wanted to keep it general and vague along the way. We wanted it to focus on how the city itself was going to manage the requests as well as the data going forward. We think in the ordinance that we had passed that we had covered a lot of the technical issues and requirements going forward, so we didn't want them to have to redo that. And so we think this is an appropriate plan. It was amended in committee, and I won't read you the language, it's here in front of us, as well as the, this is an internal surveillance application form regardless of what the technology is. We sometimes think of, as a side note, we sometimes think of surveillance technology only as security cameras, but there are many different forms. We have GPS, we have automatic key codes that come in. We now have flying security cameras with drones. We have license plate readers. We have all of these things that collect huge amounts of data, and we need to make sure and ensure that we're handling the data properly and we're not mismanaging that or opening ourselves up for any type of abuse. We recommended this in committee, three to zero, to approve this and to fulfill the administration's obligation as part of the ordinance to fulfill the policy.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote on the order, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to, I think, approve, or re-approve, Order 758?
Second.
Yeah, thank you for that. So this is about Order 758. At our last meeting, we had agreed that there was enough inconsistencies in the actions that we'd like to have an independent view, a limited one in scope. We crafted three questions, which became six. We instructed the clerk to reach out to the named attorneys. The results are in our packet as was part of additional documents as part of the original order. So in the attorneys, one passed, one wasn't asked, and one offered some feedback, and that feedback is in our packet. The committee reviewed the advice and is now seeking direction from the council as to how we want to proceed. It's coming back because we couldn't fulfill the obligations that the council had put to us. So do we want to spend money on one question, which may render the other questions moot or not? It's really the existential question that we have on this. And to recap, as a summary, very briefly, our premise is that the Water and Sewer Commission does not have the authority to issue a waiver of a legislative fee. The powers advised to them by MHTL converge powers on the board that exist for an elected board of commissioners, not an appointed one. The Newbury Port Water and Sewer Commission is an advisory board. They can recommend rates, but they cannot vote on them. They can recommend spending from retained earnings, but they can't vote on that. And they cannot raise money for projects, as we're seeing, only the council can. All this is spelled out in, very briefly, in Section 14.32. Everything that they do, they can propose, but is subject to council approval. So that said, Question One raises the question of the legitimacy of the vote itself. We may not be lawyers, but we're all parliamentarians, and we know that the roles of alternates are. At a minimum, the vote should be retaken, as we've had to do on several occasions when our process was questioned by our own bond counsel and we needed to get the i's dotted and the t's crossed in certain instances. So should we pursue a legal opinion on justice, one question or not? Again, is for us. But once we have direction on Question One, then we have opened the door again to the language of the original order and the subsequent bond. Questions two and three probably should be directed to our bond counsel. As an aside, I spoke to bond counsel back in February of last year, which is where I got my insights on this, but given that it's me and my conversation, I'm sure others would like to confirm that conversation, namely that there is no link between the order creating the privilege fee and the actual bond order that created the bond itself. MHTL's advice was predicated on a bond order directly tied to a privilege fee collections, but we know that is not the case in our bonding. Our bond was a general obligation bond bundled, high school renovations, city hall renovations, land acquisitions, a water bond as well as a sewer bond. And when we look at the bond even further, we know that of the 4 million that was allocated in the bond order, only 2.9 was in the bond that's being paid off, meaning there's 1.1 million of additional sewer bond elsewhere bundled within another bond that's not accounted for. And by the way, the questions five and six that came from the council itself validate the questioning raised in questions three and four, that the Water and Sewer Board is now calling this as a waiver, not an abatement, for a number of reasons. And as we noted above, they have no authority to waive a legislative fee. So these questions are relevant for a number of reasons, and we can debate them if you'd like, but the answers are more important than the debate, I think, as to where the authority of the council lies. And in creating the Water and Sewer Commission, we gave up some of our authority to them, but not all of it. And the council set a boundary, and again, our premise is that some of the actions taken at the 1030, 24, Water and Sewer Commission crossed those boundaries. So again, the question really is to get direction as to how we'd like to proceed and get any answers to one or six of these additional questions.
Okay, any discussion, comment? Counselor Preston?
Yeah. I think we're all sort of at a little bit of a loss. Do we feel that if we were to just ask the first question, that it could be done by one of the lawyers that's being reached out to within the budget that we decide?
Yes, that's the feedback and the recommendation from the committee, which I must have overlooked, is that Lawyer Two can handle Question One within our budget and can handle it within the timeframe, and that's our recommendation, subject to your approval.
Okay, so how would this become actionable? Is it somebody making an amendment to the original order and focusing on Question One?
Well, it is internal council business, right? And so we created this as an order to be able to do that, so.
Okay, any discussion, comment? Counselor Preston?
Yeah. I think we're all sort of at a little bit of a loss. Do we feel that we, if we were to just ask the first question, that it could be done by one of the lawyers that's being reached out to within the budget that we decide?
Yes, that's the feedback and the recommendation from the committee, which I must have overlooked, is that Lawyer Two can handle question one within our budget and can handle it within the timeframe, and that's our recommendation, subject to your approval.
So how would this become actionable? Is it somebody making an amendment to the original order and focusing on question one?
Well, it is internal council business, right? And so we created this as an order to be able to do that, so if the debate of the council itself, we approved spending the money, we approved getting answers to questions. Now, we had said six questions, and the answer was, you can't have six questions, you can have one for this particular, it's really a question now of us redirecting ourselves as to what we would like. So, for example, I could make, I could make an amendment, if you think that's valid, that we pursue Lawyer Two for question one, and we also would direct, as part of that, also direct the clerk to engage bond counsel for questions three and four, then, excuse me, two and three rather, excuse me, then I think that would suffice if, again, that met the bar of the council.
Okay. Counselor Harmon?
Like, the best plan, I mean, otherwise, we're going to be looking for additional money to pay this attorney. If we could work with bond counsel to get two and three, and get the answer on the procedural question, I don't have any objection to that.
Okay. All right, so, Counselor McCauley?
Would someone second? Thank you.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Granis, or, and/or Preston, second, second. Okay. Got motion on the table? Any further comment, discussion? All right, all those in favor, we'll do a roll call.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
I have nothing further to report from Public Works and Safety, except as a reminder that on Thursday this week, we will have a meeting. The agenda will be posted tomorrow morning. It'll be posted tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Good of the order. Happy birthday, again.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Counselor Granis, for bringing in the treats.
Thank you.
Any words from the birthday man of the hour? No?
No, no, thank you.
Report. Counselor Zied?
I know, I was just talking with the clerk this weekend, I just want to remind particularly to my, to my chair colleagues that under Rule 7H, you have the option to carry things to the next session, but it'd probably be most helpful if that could be in the packet, put some of those to be in the bag, and just simple majority to carry it to the next session. Failing that, if it's orphaned in committee, or if it comes out and isn't actioned, it's dead, and then starts over in the new year. So, I'm sure she would appreciate us helping the clerk's office and get that squared up.
Other reminders, so we've got the joint budget meeting tomorrow with the school committee, 6 o'clock at the Senior Community Center, 6 to 8. We will have a special, I will properly notice you all about the special council meeting regarding the tax rate. That'll be on Wednesday, December 3rd, 7 o'clock. Our last city council meeting following Monday, the 8th, so try to wrap off as much as we can. Also want to thank the clerk's office, two of whom are here tonight, Katie and Ally, thank you for, and Kathleen as well, for helping get us through the election season, and, yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
What time is the meeting on this?
7?
Our 3?